Five, four, three, two, one, your life.
Okay, welcome everyone to tonight's Monday, October 24, 2022 Hybrid Regular Meeting at 7:00 PM of the Livermore City Council. We have no closed session, so we're on to item 2.0, call to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Carling.
I'm here.
Councilmember Kick.
Here.
Councilmember Monroe.
Here.
Vice Mayor Banano.
Here.
Mayor Warner.
Here. Up next is the Pledge of Allegiance. Could Councilmember Carling lead us in the pledge, please?
Yes, everybody please stand and join me.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that. We're on to 3.1, Proclamation Recognizing October as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and that will be presented by Vice Mayor Banano.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mayor. I'm very, very happy to present this proclamation. Is there a representative who is going to join us? Please come up and I'll read it and then present it to you. Thank you.
It's a Maitre Finance and Accounting Manager, Sanuja Hegg.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that. He just reminded me. Oh, he did. I apologize. Okay, so in proclaiming proclaiming National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, in the month of October 2022, whereas domestic violence affects people of all genders, sexual orientations, ages, racial, ethnic, cultural, social, religious, and economic groups in the United States and here in California. And whereas there were eighty-seven domestic violence-related homicides in California in 2020, of which seventy of the fatalities were female and seventeen were male. Seven percent of all homicides in 2020 were domestic violence-related, and whereas all survivors deserve access to culturally responsive programs and services to increase their safety and self-deficiency. And whereas domestic violence programs in California provide essential lifesaving services for survivors, their children, and communities. And whereas progress has been made toward preventing and ending domestic violence and providing support to survivors and their families, however important work remains to be done. There is a need to provide education, awareness, understanding of domestic violence and its causes. And whereas, all communities deserve access to culturally responsive preventative programs and initiatives to improve overall community health and safety by challenging the societal norms that perpetuate violence. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Livermore proclaims October 2022 as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month and encourages residents to support domestic violence prevention programs and domestic violence survivors. Do you like to say a few words?
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, and members of the public. My name is Sanuja Hegde and have been a resident of Livermore since August 2022. Today I stand here as victims and survivor, sorry, today I stand here as an advocate for victims and survivors of domestic violence. I represent Maitri and organization devoted to serving victims and survivors of domestic violence since 1991. We want to take a few moments to talk about an epidemic that is pervasive in our homes, cities, state, country, and all over the world. Domestic violence exists in all communities irrespective of culture, religion, sexual orientation, financial status, educational qualification, and immigration realities. Domestic violence is a pattern of coercive controlling behavior that can include physical abuse, emotional or psychological abuse, sexual abuse, or financial abuse. I request City Council to consider the following. Enact and support policies that address an intersectional approach to addressing domestic violence, homelessness, pay equity, reproductive rights, poverty reduction, to name a few. Support funding for domestic violence service providers at the federal, state, city, and country levels. Create opportunities and space for culturally responsive training for departments and agencies interacting with the public at large. Involve non-governmental organizations as thought partners while planning city activities. To the community members, I urge you to recognize domestic violence as a pressing issue. Exemplify healthy relationships for the children at home. Elect leaders and promote policies that contribute towards building a just and equitable future for all of us. Thank you for adopting this proclamation and commemorating October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. We're on next to Beautification Committee Annual Update presented by Vice Chair Mark Geralca. This is item 3.2.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, I am Mark Geralca, Vice Chair of the Beautification Committee. Thank you for having the committee present an annual report regarding our activities in 2022. I would like to acknowledge the rest of the Beautification Committee. Susan Juiskow, the Chair, Patty Cole, Committee Member, Karenell Jefferson, Committee Member, Sandra G. Lormand, Committee Member, and Sutcharitha Rallapalli, Committee Member. We'd also like to thank City Staff Liaisons, Jeff Schaefer, Assistant Director of Public Works, Joe Prime, Public Works Supervisor, Lori Tobias, Senior Clerk, and Lori Griffiths, Typist Clerk. The major accomplishments of the committee for 2022 include awarded for 2020, awarded for 2021 Beautification Committee Awards to residents in recognition of their homes that have significantly improved the visual appearance of the property and are aesthetically beneficial to the surrounding areas. Presided over Arbor Day 2022, visiting thirteen schools to hand out prepared bags containing seeds and other materials to distribute to approximately 1,000 second graders. Participated in the Maintenance Division's booth at the farmer's market. Handed out Beautification Committee Award brochures and spoke with residents about what the Beautification Committee is about. Presided over a denied tree removal permit appeal. The committee's decision was to uphold staff's decision to deny the removal permit. Participated in the Springtown Preserve Bioblitz. A Bioblitz is a communal citizen science effort to record as many species within a designated location and time period as possible. Committee Member Cole created a beautiful field guide of Livermore birds. The book has photos and information to help bird watchers identify species in the Springtown area. Thank you once again for supporting the Beautification Committee.
Okay, thank you. It's always much appreciated the work you guys do. At this point, I believe Councilmember Carling will present the awards. Is that correct?
Okay, I think we had a brief description of them. Do I go through that?
Yeah, well, that's.
Or we do the awards first.
Sure. So the first person that I recognize is Kevin Weiss. So. Do we show, what's the process? Do we show her before and after or something? Do you have control of that, Mark?
Yes, Joe is on a slideshow.
Maybe. Real quickly, I could read, we had five. Not everyone is here. There are, I think there are three, three here. I'll read through quick. The first one was eighteen twenty-four Galaxy Court. There is a, should I, because there is a dramatic decrease in irrigation requirements with elimination of the lawn. They planted shrubs and the planted shrubs have become well-established with a drip watering system. The scattering of various-sized boulders and rocks adds diversity, diversity to the yard and provides a naturalistic setting. The face of the house is opened more, is open more, including exposing the brickwork with the removal of several tall bushes.
So that's Stacy Swanson. Stacy here. Why don't you come up, Stacy? Because that's, this is Stacy's home. What's next?
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay, thank you. Three oh two seven Chateau Way. This yard is now drought tolerant and enriched with native plants. The mix of shrubs, vibrant, vibrant flowers and trees brighten up the threshold of this home. The landscaping has allowed the property to stand out with wonderful colors and accentuates the yard pathways.
So that's Kate Nandy McKinnon. They're not present this evening, but congratulations to them. Who's next?
One eight five five Monterey Drive. All the condominiums in this development have limited landscape space for residents to garden. Yet, as we can see in the after photo, this property really stands out. The planters were incorporated with in-ground foliage. There are a variety of vibrant colors that make this property stand out, bringing life to the yard. This was a creative way to enhance a smaller, more restricted area into something truly beautiful.
So that's Carolyn Robinson, she was.
Three zero zero two Bertoli. There's plenty of desirable aspects here with this award winner. Plant selections and placement encourage a home for birds and cross pollinators with an increase of water conservation. With the addition of gravel and colorful flowers, this landscape project has brightened the property and accentuated the house to look even more pleasing to the eye.
That is. Poor Garland, I don't believe.
I don't think she's here. Three oh three two Logus Drive. This was a nice landscape that was renovated to accentuate the house's design and character. The new landscaping is drought tolerant and it adds to the water reduction. The use of various native plants provides a visual effect that complements the surrounding property.
And that's Kevin Weiss. So congratulations to all these folks. And I'm pleased to, let's see, Kat, that's yours. So congratulations to all of you and to those that couldn't be here tonight. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. One of the awards is to one of my neighbors, so it's a good job, inspiration for the rest of us. Okay, we're now on to Citizens Forum. And could the city clerk please explain the process for participating in this evening's meeting?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The City Council's agenda provides opportunities for the public to participate in the meeting by addressing the City Council in the following ways. First, for non-adjourned items, the public has the opportunity during Citizens Forum to address the City Council on any item of interest that is within the City Council's subject matter jurisdiction. Second, for adjourned items, the public can address the City Council on each item of business it considers when the mayor opens public comment and should be focused on that particular business item. Please note, a speaker is not required to answer any questions from the City Council, and the City Council is not required to answer questions from the public. However, the mayor has the discretion to ask staff to address the speaker's comments when a council member believes it is relevant to a particular business item. When participating in tonight's meeting, one comment may be given per person, per item. Members of the public can participate in person or remotely, as noticed on the agenda. To provide comment in person, please fill out and turn in a speaker card found at the entrance of the council chamber. Speakers will be announced in the order received. We will hear from members of the public who are in person first, followed by those wishing to speak on Zoom. To provide comment by Zoom, please use the raise hand feature or star nine if calling in when the item begins. Please do not wait until the public comment period opens for each item to raise your hand. Instead, raise your hand at the beginning of each item. Once public comment opens, each participant's name will be announced and their three minutes will begin once at the lectern or upon being unmuted. The mayor will announce a conclusion of public comment after comments have been voiced into the record. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. We're starting at seven fifteen, we'll go to eight forty-five, and if there's any comment left, we'll pick it up at the end of the meeting.
Excuse me, Mayor, it is seven fifteen?
Oh, seven fifteen to eight forty-five? Is that, I mean, seven forty-five, I'm sorry. You're right. Anyway, thirty minutes. Thank you. So then anyway, the city clerk will announce when there's five minutes remaining at seven forty, if I got that right. Okay, so at this point, do we have any members of the public that wish to address us?
Yes, we do, Mayor. First, we have Connie, Connie Hang, followed by Vladimir, followed by Robin Grothill. I also saw several city workers come and survey this area. PG&E trenched up Bear Creek Drive, and there is utility graffiti everywhere. And every time I walk by, I get upset knowing the story behind all this mess. After tremendous effort to discover the truth behind the work, PG&E confirmed via email on October twentieth that the utility work on Bear Creek Drive is purely for the potential Garaventa development, which I want to remind you, because everyone seems to forget, is not approved. If it is, then it is being done behind closed doors. I also want to add that I don't hold a fancy engineering degree, and even then, I could have told you this work was purely for the Garaventa project. So how could the city's engineers approve this permit thinking this is to improve the existing infrastructure? How much money went into all of this? How much money did the city survey crew get paid? What about the city inspector? And how about the time and money it took during the planning and approval process? And how much money will it take to fix Bear Creek? All of this unnecessary work for a project that wasn't even approved? They cut up entrenched our perfectly good street and they ruined a portion of our sidewalk. It's an optical migraine, and I want to know who was responsible for this mismanagement and who was, who was responsible for this resulting eyesore on my street? Is anyone going to be held accountable? Is the city interested in making amends and finding out why tax dollars were needlessly spent on this project? Because so far, it seems like the city is more interested in defending this project and any work related to this project. Next up is Vladimir, followed by Robin Grothill, followed by Carol Silva.
Hello? Prior to permitting utility work on Bear Creek Drive, city engineers Farnoosh Levers and Fan Yu failed to recognize that the utility work they were permitting was designed to power a housing development on Garaventa Hill that isn't even approved. How the engineering department managed to issue this permit and verify the integrity of the work without knowing the purpose of the work is beyond me. One of their responses to me has been that they simply did not know what they were permitting, and I don't think that's a respectable way to represent the engineering department of the City of Livermore. Now, before your legal counsel presents me with their legal word salad as to why this city did nothing wrong, I would like to remind the city and your legal representatives that earlier this year, you lost in court to a resident of Livermore, a single mom nonetheless, in regards to this very same Garaventa Hill project. I would advise you to stick your heads out of your books and your codes and explore some common sense. You see, this entire thing could have been avoided if our engineers were simply cognizant of the work they are permitting. Because now that I was able to establish communication between the city and PG&E and make sure that both parties are aware of basic facts, the work has stopped. I believe these engineers should be held accountable. I think most people would agree that it is somewhat humiliating to stand here and explain to you where you are making mistakes. It is insulting because I believe you are perfectly aware of your mistakes. You just don't seem to care. If the people of Livermore began to show you the same, the same amount of respect as you showed them, you would be avoiding being seen in public due to the possibility that some of your constituency might recognize and shame you. But I don't think it will happen because I don't think the people are capable of remembering your names and faces. You're all very forgettable, and those that aren't here as well. Your pointless legacy and impact on Livermore will soon be forgotten quickly after you're gone. I think the only one that will be remembered is Trish Monroe, because Patty can't go two minutes without speaking into a microphone and boring us with her perspective. Anyway, who wants to help fix Bear Creek Drive? Maybe the council would like to lend a hand. I'm starting to think that you would serve us better with a shovel in your hands. Thanks.
Excuse me, we don't, we ask people not to either clap or boo. If you agree with the speaker, just raise your hand. That way we can acknowledge your acceptance of what the speaker has to say. So we ask you not to speak, clap, or boo. Thank you.
This is Robin, Robin Growth Health. I'm here tonight, and I don't have anything written out. I'm just kind of speaking from the hip because I've been out for the last year speaking to citizens about concerns. Mr. Carling, we met speaking about concerns a year ago. And what I'm hearing is there's a huge lack of transparency, and this lack of transparency is all over the city. We just heard from our neighbors out there in Bear Creek what their lack of transparency is when they have PG&E digging up their street, and they don't know why, and they're calling the city and they're not getting answers. Well, I came here originally tonight to talk about the traffic downtown because that's a huge issue with me. I've been looking into the traffic studies and how it came about that this huge impact, which again, on the outreach in 2017 came in as number four as a concern for citizens. It appears that was thrown out the window because with approximately at minimum eight thousand, probably closer up to ten to fourteen thousand extra cars on our downtown corridor, which is a very small area, on a daily basis. I don't know who thought that they could get past all of these reports that clearly show its unacceptable traffic levels. But going through all of that in my, my public document request, I came across this thing from Eden, and I felt like this was definitely something I wanted to speak about. So I'm going to go ahead and just read off some things from a letter from Eden Housing dated April thirtieth, 2021 that came to Steve Stewart, Steve Stewart, the Planning Manager, City of Livermore. So we all know that Eden Housing is a hot topic here in Livermore, and I know a couple of weeks ago, the city, you, you all just decided to go ahead and sell it to Eden Housing and kind of put them right in the middle of this, so they're now fully in control. So I just want to be transparent, maybe do your guys' job for you, to the city of Livermore, citizens of Livermore, about what that really means to them. So with the proximity of the project in consideration to the transit center, which is less than a half mile away, Eden gets all these, these bonuses. These are density bonuses, state density bonus law. And what the four they chose was request for bonus density. They can go as big as they want. There's nothing that the city can do. They can go for as high as they want. There's nothing the city can do. It actually says here, project receive this height increase, which the city must grant Eden by right under state density bonus law. They have a concession for setbacks, so the buildings can go all the way out to the street. And then, of course, the most concerning, they can get rid of all parking standards for Eden Housing. We already know that happened with the hotel. Is Eden Housing going to be the next one? So I'm just here to inform citizens, read up on all the stuff that comes before the City Council, because we know you guys are not making the decisions on behalf of us citizens.
Next speaker is Carol Silva, followed by Lisa Tramovich, followed by Paula Campbell.
Thank you, City Council members. When I normally speak in front of the City Council, it's usually about Eden Housing, but tonight I'm going to talk about Garaventa Hill. I've been reading about it in the paper, and when I read it, I thought, well, this sounds rather devious, but maybe the city engineers approve PG&E's application, even though there hasn't been approval from the city, because maybe they rubber stamp the applications like PG&E's application. And then I read Vladimir's recent letter, and he stated that multiple times, the city's senior civil engineer says that city reviews all permits accurately and thoroughly. So I mean, they're not even giving an excuse that such permits are rubber stamped. And yet Vladimir, who reviewed the enrollment permit, found many red flags in the document that were worth questioning. This has really upset me because this is a very unique area with endangered species. And it's not like endangered species need utilities to have on a conservation piece of land. Thank you.
Next speaker is Lisa Tramovich, followed by Paula Campbell.
Hi, Council staff. Thank you so much for having us here today to bring information to light. And I have understood that there is a climate action plan that the city is working on. And I just wanted to let you all know that Spark Theater is doing two semi-staged book-in-hand readings on climate change. The first weekend and the third weekend of November, and I'll leave some postcards with staff. We're, one of the plays that works looks at an early climate change event when the water was sort of sucked out of the oceans and became the polar ice caps. And coincidentally, the other play looks at what happens when those polar ice caps melt again. Neither playwright has met. They don't know each other. They're both new plays, and one of them we actually commissioned here in Livermore. So no one has seen this play or read this play except a few of us in-house that are working with the playwrights. Several scientists from the Lawrence Livermore Lab have been working with us to bring accuracy to the play as well. And I just hope everyone that's interested in climate change will check out our website, sparktheater.org, and stay after the readings to discuss the issues and what we can do. Thank you.
Next speaker is Paula Campbell, followed by our Zoom speakers.
Hello, my name's Paula Campbell. I'm a resident of Livermore since 2001. Very happy resident of Livermore. So I want to thank the council, the city staff, and the Livermore Police Department for all you do to care for the Livermore community citizens, all of us. Back in 2018, there were three parents who were concerned about the vaping crisis that was becoming more prevalent at the schools locally here in Livermore and throughout the country, really. Those three mothers met with the then-City Council people, Councilman Carling was, was one. Then Councilmember Warner was actually the first council member we spoke to, and we also spoke to former Mayor Marshawn. We presented the council with data which supported our concerns about the increased vaping happening at the local schools, including our elementary schools in Livermore. The entire year of 2019, those three mothers, I was one of the three mothers, attended every city council meeting to work. to work with the council, the mayor, and city staff on how this problem could be better managed. And I'm very, very happy and delighted to say that city council worked very closely with us three moms, and an ordinance was approved in the summer of 2019. And that ordinance was to take effect January 2020. Then, summer of 2019, Big Tobacco came into town, and they tried to stir it up a bit with these incredibly serious ridiculous signature signers who will say anything to get the signature on the line that they get eight dollars for, for each line. So there were lies said, of course, to encourage people to sign these these petitions. And if they gathered enough signatures, then they could submit them to the city. And actually, that's what happened, and Big Tobacco halted the the ordinance that had already been approved by our city council. And a referendum was then in place, which stopped all the process. So the city council and us three moms, we called ourselves, we still do, because we're still working on it, Flavors at Kids Livermore. We work closely together. Councilpeople met with Big Tobacco in jewel suits who came to town to try to encourage council to reverse their decision. Long story short, Jewel withdrew the referendum. The ordinance took place and was in effect in January of 2020. We had incredible support by the Livermore Police Department for enforcement. I did a survey on January 3rd with several local tobacco retail shops, and all of the products were off the shelves. That didn't just happen without a lot of effort from our council, our city staff, and especially our police department. So my point for being here is just to thank all of you for what you do. We know you don't great, make great salaries, and we know that the amount of time you put into this job, countless number of hours. People cannot appreciate the work that you do unless you were close, unless they were closely with you as as the two moms and I did with all of you. So I commend you for the research you do. You didn't want to talk to us unless, unless we had data to support what we were saying. We always were able to provide that data. We also provided support from the American Cancer Society and the Lung Association, and also Alameda County Tobacco Control Coalition. So you didn't make any decisions until you heard the data from those who know the data the best. So, thank you very much. Appreciate your ongoing support of our town, and I commend your bravery for sitting in those seats because as we all know, in town, it's not always the most popular place to be sitting. So thank you very much for what you do, and I will assure you that there are so many, more than eight thousand people in this community who believe what I do, and thank you very much.
Next speaker is Carl Wentie.
Livermore City Council, Mr. Mayor, I don't know who else is online. I see Mr. Carling and Ms. Banano. Thank you all so much for what you do. What a refreshing breath of air there, just saying thank you, right? A thankless job. Commend you for your bravery. So those that serve, appreciate it. Those that put on a bulletproof vest to go to work, keep us safe, salute you. Thank you. City staff? Microphone. City staff, you all, you all do listen. It's an imperfect system, and you can please some people sometime. You can't please all the people all the time. But to, to say this egregious lack of transparency, it's just not what I'm seeing in the process all the way through. I, I don't know, a darn thing about Garaventos. Hey, but like, and I'm sorry for those people disrupted and the likes, but to go after the integrity of it doesn't feel good, doesn't feel right, and it's not the people that I know. So when we say we want to look and review the documents and go back to that committee that you chaired of that downtown it goes through and all of the state laws, all the RIN numbers, all the transportation-based housing, all of it, thousands of pages, and I welcome that dialogue all the way through, because I was there. We bore witness to this. So when they come up and people are questioning your guys' integrity and the lack of transparency and, and you know who lacks integrity in this? Is fundamentally Joan Sepulveda, who has that paper, writes in that paper. And then people say, well, I read in the paper that this happened. So like, I, I say that publicly because it is distorting the truth as this comes through. So I bore witness to it. I'd love to discuss this with anybody anytime because do believe in this fragile democratic republic that we're in. So hopefully we can be kind to each other. Hopefully we can have discourse about what we do, and I just want to say thank you. Want to say thank you to all the people that came up and spoke that care about this. Those online, they're going to say something. Thank you for what you do. This process, this experiment. We know how fragile it is. We're watching what's happening and how fragile it is. So can we be kind to each other? Can we talk it through? And by all means, let's go to the public domain. Let's understand what happened, and let's keep moving our town forward. So thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Excuse me, Mayor and Councilmembers. We do need a quick five-minute break to make sure that our off-site residents are getting appropriate audio. We'll be back in just one moment. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Please stand by. We'll count you in. Five, four, three, two.
The next speakers will be by Zoom, Alan Marling, followed by Allison Hayden. Alan Marling, please unmute yourself.
Mayor, city council, and fellow residents, I can only hope the Independent is the worst newspaper in California because I hate to think of another town subjected to even more bias. The October 13th article, "Who's Funding the Candidates", falsely claimed local nonprofits donated to Marchand for mayor, jeopardizing the 501(c)(3) status of the charities. The article then highlighted real top donors to Marchand, Branning, and Chong. However, when it came to their competitors, the data ignored the largest contributors from PACS. This was done to hide the fact that these other candidates are supported by an out-of-town billionaire, Gene King, and Joan Sepulveda, who owns the Independent. Plutocrats King and Sepulveda fund over ninety percent of many local political action committees, such as Take Back Livermore. The Independent refers to these organizations as grassroots, which is the opposite of true. The greatest lie I've seen Sepulveda print was a front-page article from April 2021 titled, "Save Livermore Downtown Presents Findings for Eden Housing Downtown Alternative." It validated the deceptive talking points of another special interest group, again funded by Sepulveda. The downtown alternative was smoke and mirrors to trick residents into opposing affordable housing during a housing crisis. Of course, full-page ads of Sepulveda's groups in her newspaper are paid for by her and also push her agenda. Truth no longer seems to be a priority of this paper. Only power. The Independent is not independent of its owner's politics, and Joan Sepulveda uses it as a weekly propaganda leaflet mailed to residents whether they ask for it or not. Most damning for a newspaper, regular readers are more likely to be misinformed about critical local news unless they restrict their attention to the sports section.
The next speaker is Allison Hayden. Please unmute yourself.
Thank you very much, Board, City Council, for listening to the residents and community. My name is Allison Hayden, and I am running for our seat in Congress, which includes Livermore. And I am really pleased to see item seven about homelessness on the agenda. It's very important that resources are given to this problem. But there's one thing I think that we really need to consider is that government overreach. We are more and more receiving federal dollars for homelessness for, for different kinds of programs, special ads. And this then kind of diverts our attention away from local, taking care of our problems locally through local communities and such. So we end up managing a problem that we could probably solve at a local level. My campaign is about getting the feds out of our life, getting them out of our family life, our children's life, the education. We need to bring it local, make our solutions be local, use the power of, of strong families. Family First is my moniker. Strong families make strong communities like Livermore, who are very attentive to the problems and needs of its community. So as we look forward, we can be bringing in companies and attracting the kinds of money-making ventures that will fuel our economy in Livermore and Alameda County through bringing local initiatives, funding local initiatives. Also that, you know, in terms of safety, we need to have all of the law enforcement agencies bolstered with technology and resources, safe families without a big homeless problem because in the community, the people know their own and can solve this problem locally. The more that we are sucking from a federal hose, it's never going away. So I urge you to also consider your local resources and community and to bring things home locally to the family, to the community, and look for solutions at home that they can support, but they are not feeding. So I appreciate your ears. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Mayor, there are no more requests to speak?
Okay, thank you. At this point, we'll close the citizens forum and move on to the consent calendar. And consent calendar items are considered routine in nature and act upon by the city council, the single action. Members of the audience wishing to provide a public input must submit a speaker card or use the raise hand feature in Zoom during the public comment period to comment on any of the consent calendar items. Would any member of the council like to pull any item for specific discussion? I don't see anyone, so therefore, at this, oh, Councilmember, Vice Mayor Banano.
I was just going to move approval.
Oh. Great. We have to find out first if there's any public comment. I believe. So does any member of the public wish to address us on any item, consent calendar?
Here, no comments have been received.
Okay, I'll close the public comment on it. And now, Vice Mayor Banano.
Move approval of the consent calendar.
And Councilmember Kik.
I'll second.
Okay, now can we have a moved and seconded? Any further discussion? Don't see any. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Carling?
Hi.
Councilmember Kik?
Hi.
Councilmember Monroe.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Banano.
Hi.
Mayor Warner.
Hi. Passes unanimously. Thank you. We're now on to 6.1, Public Hearings. Adoption of an Ordinance Amending and Revising the Building Code, Property Maintenance Code, Fire Code, Electrical Code, Mechanical Code, Plumbing Code, Residential Code, and the Green Building Standards Codes in the city's municipal code to adopt by reference and amend the 2022 California Building Standards Code and the code set forth therein. Did I miss any, leave any code out? Can we have the staff presentation, please?
Yes, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council, this is your City Manager, Mariana Mardaschova. Our first public hearing tonight, 6.1, is going to be presented by Chief Building Official Frank Mofarge and Senior Planner Trisha Ponto. Mr. Mofarge?
All right, the share screen is now.
Go ahead, Frank.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor, good evening. Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, staff, and members of the public, I am Frank Mofarge, Chief Building Official. I am here with Senior Planner Trish Ponto to present the 2022 Building Code Adoption. Building codes are entitled 24 of the California Building Code of Regulations. The Health and Safety Codes mandates that the Building Standards Commission adopt and publish the building codes. They also mandate that all occupancies are applied to this code. Local governments can amend these codes prior to taking effect in January 1st, based on local conditions. Once adopted by City Council, the codes are filed with the California Building Standard Commission, which makes them effective as amended on January 1st, 2023. Code changes are focused on life, safety, and environmental protection based on local climatic, topographical, geological, and environmental conditions. For example, fire sprinklers are required in all buildings. Fire retardant roofing materials. No under-slab plumbing is allowed. New codes are going for building electrification and additional requirements for EV chargers.
Okay, thank you, Frank. I'm good evening, Mayor and City Council. As Frank was mentioning, we have some new amendments in the code for all-electric built, new buildings and EV charging. And these are reach codes. They're amendments to the 2022 CalGreen standards. And reach codes are local codes that are more stringent than the minimum state requirements and are an effective and flexible tool for local governments to implement local energy and climate policies. So on July 16th of last year, the City Council directed staff to pursue reach codes for all-electric buildings and EV charging in new construction. And we've developed these codes in coordination with East Bay Community Energy and our neighboring cities of Dublin and Pleasanton. The proposed code amendments would require most new buildings in Livermore to be all-electric. The requirements would not apply to additions or renovations in existing buildings. And the code also exempts certain types of new construction projects from the requirements. Now, in your supplemental packet, we included a letter from Bloom Energy that requested changes to our proposed reach code to allow for non-combustion fuel cell technologies, including ones that convert natural gas to electricity. So staff is recommending that we add an exemption to the residential and non-residential all-electric reach codes to allow for this type of equipment. For the EV charging reach code, it would add additional requirements for EV charging infrastructure in new buildings. For example, all of the requirements are shown on the screen, but I'll walk through a couple of them. For one and two-family dwellings and townhouses that have private garages, the new code would require two Level 2 EV-ready spaces, which means that the spaces are ready for charters to be plugged in, but the charters are not installed yet. And this saves money doing this at the time of construction, rather than having to go in later and retrofit the building. And then on the multifamily side, it would require 15% of units to have access to a Level 2 EV charger, so actual installed charger. And then 85% of units would have access to a Level 2 EV-ready space. So 100% of units would have access to a space that either has a charger or can accommodate a charger. And then we have similar standards for other non-residential uses. And then, again, similar to the all-electric code, these EV charging requirements would not apply to additions or renovations of existing buildings. So staff recommends adopting the 2022 California Code as revised and amended by the Livermore Community Development Department and Livermore Pleasanton Fire Department, including the new exception for the all-electric codes we discussed tonight. And that concludes our presentation. We're available for questions.
Okay, thank you. At this point, I'll open the public hearing. Do we have any members of the public that wish to address us on 6.1?
Yes, Mayor, there is one request to speak over Zoom. Manal Shafi, please unmute yourself.
Good evening. My name is Manal Shafi. I'm a Government and Community Relations Coordinator at Bloom Energy. We would like to thank the council and the staff for their diligent work on this building electrification reach code. Building electrification is an important strategy to address climate change. We believe that non-combustion distributed energy resources that provide onsite electricity and compete with marginal natural gas or oil-fired power plants and diesel backup generators can support electrification strategies. Since combustion technologies such as heaters, stoves, and water boilers contribute to a vast majority of the natural gas used in buildings, electrification policy should focus on applications for end uses within the buildings. Bloom Energy would also like to lend itself as a resource for information about solid oxide fuel cell technology and non-combustion microgrids as the city continues to implement strategies outlined in its draft climate action plan. This includes the outlined actions to expand the deployment of microgrids, utilize biogas from the city's water treatment facility, and expand the use of hydrogen fuels. Thank you for the opportunity to provide input on Livermore's building electrification reach code.
Mayor, there are no more requests to speak?
Okay, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. We've got a couple of hands raised. Start with Councilmember Kik.
Hi, I appreciate this very much. I just have one question about the multifamily EV-ready spaces. So if I was living in a multifamily unit and there was an EV-ready space, is there, in the code or coming down the pipeline, an opportunity to make it easier for residents of those multifamily units to advocate for or get an EV-ready space? How is that current, what does that currently look like? And what can we do to increase adoption so it's 100% available to everybody? Especially as we hit all-electric vehicles in the next 20 years or so as a California goal?
If I can just clarify, your question is about how do we get to 100% of access to installed chargers as opposed to just EV-ready spaces?
Yeah, so right now, it's EV-ready. Let's say I have an EV-ready space at an apartment. And I would like one as the resident of the apartment, but the building owner isn't quite ready yet. What is that, is the onus all on the building owner? Is there opportunity for non-owners that live in these spaces to better advocate for that? What does that currently look like? And maybe there's not a solution yet, and that's something we need to advocate for at the state level?
A little bit. Councilmember Kik. What we're doing is providing the infrastructure. The biggest amount, the biggest cost is when the building is being built. And this way, it's easier and the least cost after the fact. So there, I don't know how multifamily buildings work. It's a matter of a contractual thing between them and their, and the owners. But this actually provides them the, you know, the biggest opportunity to get there the fastest.
I appreciate that. Thank you. I would love that by the time this is an adoption, if this passes, that we have conversations on how we're going to communicate this to the public so that they understand that we are providing the most of the infrastructure, but that there is work to be done and that we're not guaranteeing that we'll get to 100%, that we're going to provide the base level for that.
We will, oh, sorry. This is Paul Spence, your Community Development Director. We will absolutely share this information with the public and are happy, as we move forward, to do outreach to multi-tenant property owners to try to advocate for an increase in electric vehicles spaces.
Thank you.
If I could, I think what I heard Councilmember Kik say, is there any kind of incentive for the building owners in the multifamily to actually put in the rest of the infrastructure that's needed? And under what situation, X% of the renters want it? So I think it's a question we don't have an answer for, is what I heard. But it's something that we should contemplate as this comes back. I think that's what I heard. Is that correct, Councilmember Kik?
Yes, thank you for translating my mumbling. Appreciate it.
Well, I wouldn't call it that. I just, it takes a while to get to the essence and then listen to the answer, but I think that's it. Vice Mayor Banano.
Thanks very much. So I'm really happy to see the EV infrastructure code updates that you've proposed and recommended. These are, just want to remind folks or call attention to the fact that these are, these are big upticks from the minimums. And I've always been really. Just try again. I've really advocated for Livermore being a leader in this area, and I think this clearly shows that. And I'm really happy to see that our neighboring cities are on the same page with us. And I really, to Councilmember Kik's point and questions, the multifamily developments are really, really important, and those are where we have the largest amount of new infrastructure going. And it's so cost-effective. I wouldn't say it's almost nothing to put in the infrastructure during construction, but it's so much cheaper than having to come back and retrofit this infrastructure later. This gives people who live in these multifamily dwellings an opportunity with a fairly small increment, either on their own or with their property owner's funding, to actually have EV charging. And the infrastructure always has to lead the adoption of the technology. So I think this is wonderful, and I appreciate a lot of the comments that Councilmember Carling and I have made through the Climate Action sub-community being incorporated here. So that is really all. I'm just very supportive of this. Appreciate all the work on the other aspects of this. This is the one that got most of my attention, but I think all the other code updates are very important. It's something we have to do to stay compliant with the state. And again, these are, we're beginning to see implementation of things that will be part of our updated climate action plan, which I think we're going to see very soon. So thanks so much for that. Appreciate it.
Okay, Councilmember Carling.
My turn. Well, I guess I didn't hear Bob suggest I would speak next, but I will. It looks like I'm next on the list. So I wanted to thank you again for this. I, you know, Vice Mayor and I have been working pretty hard with staff on the Climate Action Plan. And to her point, it's going to be rolled out here in the next few weeks. And we hope and expect that the city residents will see a place that they fit into this. And certainly, one of the issues in moving to all-electric vehicles is to provide the infrastructure. And I think Councilmember Kik, did my microphone cut out on me? Huh? It just went down? Is it still okay? All right. I think Councilmember Kik's point is a good one, and I hope and expect that as new multifamily units are developed here in the city, that maybe the owner, the billing, would use the fact that they have Level 2 charging as an incentive to rent to people and use that as a carrot for people to rent in their facility. So let's hope that that's true. I also appreciate you working with Bloom Energy, because I spoke with them, and I think they had some good points in terms of trying to avoid unintended consequences moving forward as we go to all-electric. So I think some of the wording they provided is very good, and I certainly support that exception as outlined by Ms. Ponto earlier. So I certainly support this and look forward to implementing these reach codes in the city of Livermore. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Monroe.
Okay, thank you. And I did hear my name. So I echo my colleagues' support for this. This is really wonderful work. I had a couple of questions around the exceptions. Mostly because, you know, when exceptions show up, that's what draws your eye. So I'm looking at the multi, you know, those multifamily residential projects before the effect of data culture, that makes sense. I'm not, what would, what are the, what's the effect of the accessory dwelling units, of the commercial kitchens, of that whole section of, here is where the exception, how do we, how do we think that's going to affect the total goal of electrification going forward? So that's one question. And then the second one is, when I look, I'm wondering whether there's a way, even whatever the answer to the first question is, to encourage, even with the exceptions, to encourage a move towards electrification. So for example, I know commercial kitchens tend to want to use gas as opposed to induction. What if they could use induction half of the time and have gas for limited uses? Is there, is there some push, is there some way to encourage that? I'm just using that as an example. Does that make sense? Do those two questions make sense?
Yes. Yes, Councilmember Monroe, do you hear me? A little closer to the mic. Yes, we exempted the ADUs just so we're not being in conflict with the state requirement to be a barrier to provide ADUs. And that doesn't mean that we're not going to get all-electrical ADUs, but it's not going to discourage others to put them in. We just didn't want to be in conflict. And the commercial kitchens, there's new technology coming on, and I'm hoping to see a lot of commercial kitchens use the new technologies without gas as well.
So I had a larger question, which was, how do we, so let me, let me see if I can summarize the answer I heard, which was there were very specific exemptions for each of these for different reasons. And the larger hope is that regardless of what the exemption is, either new technology or encouragement will enable electrification to take place. That, would that be accurate?
Yes.
Okay. So then, the larger question was, given that, or that aside, do we have a sense for what the effect of these exemptions is likely to be? And the answer can be no. You know, we don't have a sense, because maybe we don't. I'm just curious.
This is Paul Spence, your Community Development Director. I think that the impact of the exemptions is going to be very modest. We have a small number of ADUs that are approved each year, but as was pointed out, we don't want this to be a barrier. We have a small number of commercial kitchens that come in each year. So it's relatively modest, but we didn't want it to be a barrier to commercial activity or to affordable housing units. So they're small-scale exemptions that we don't think will have. So they're small scale exemptions that we don't think will have a large impact on our greenhouse gas emissions.
Great. That, that was what I was expecting. Like I said, the word exception draws one's eye. I wanted to confirm that the exception, exception also meant small. So thank you for doing so. And thank you all for your work. This is wonderful.
Okay, I've got a couple of questions. What about, what was the, what did you say the effective date is? When is the last application for a, a development due in order to not be subject to this?
It would be December 28, 2022, unless that, that development is under one of the exemptions that's been already approved.
Yeah, okay. So, and I, and I just want to be sure, what step of the process does it have to have been through in order to, to not be subject?
It would have been, have been entitled.
Okay. Okay, thank you. That's, I just want to make sure. So if it's not entitled by December 22, it's, it's subject to the new rules? Is that correct?
If it's entitled, but they have to apply for a permit, it's based on the day of the application of a building permit before December 28, 2022. So it doesn't mean that if it's, no, no, actually, it's when it's entitled. If it's entitled already, it's exempt.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to make sure that that's properly communicated. So all the people involved know and nobody's surprised. I guess that was the first thing. And then the next question I have, I was reading an article in the paper just recently that talked about, you know, for charging, many people's homes may not have the panel and maybe a panel upgrade might be needed. But then if with a new technology, you can kind of make sure that the EV charger wouldn't work if there were some other item using the power. And I'm just wondering if you had heard of that? And if in fact, something like that is permissible? Or do we need code changes to allow that kind of technology?
No, that is something that is permissible. It's, it's a man, electrical management system that is allowed by code right now. It's kind of like a master system that watches the flows of electricity into the house and, and kind of governs it. If there's a, if there's not enough fuse, it kind of channels the electricity one way or another. So it's, it's a good way to provide houses that are older and they don't want to do an upgrade to their main panel in order to have access to, to EV chargers.
Okay, I was just, I'd read that and I wasn't sure that if it was permissible, but thank you. And I see Vice Mayor Banano has her hand up.
Yeah, I just want to be very clear. I, I appreciate that point. I think that you were talking about is how people who might want to upgrade to all electric in their home or to charge or to add EV charging, that, that the ordinance does not apply to existing construction, existing buildings. So this was controversial early in the process of working through the cap. I just want to be very clear, this ordinance is only for new construction and will not affect in any way existing structures. Just want to make that clear.
Sure, I wasn't trying, and thank you for clarifying that. I wasn't trying to mix it up. I was just trying to figure out if that technology were available for anybody who wanted to make use of it. Not, this isn't a requirement. It's just a question of whether it's, you can do that. So the load management system and making sure that you don't overload your circuitry is what we were talking about. So I, with this, I think that's the end of the discussion. Councilmember Carling.
I'll move approval of, I'll move approval of staff recommendation, including the exception that Ms. Ponto mentioned.
Vice Mayor Banano.
I'd be happy to second.
Okay, moved in second. I don't see any further discussion. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Carling.
Hi.
Councilmember Kick.
Hi.
Councilmember Monroe.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Banano.
Hi.
Mayor Warner.
Hi, passes unanimously. It's good to see us making progress in this area. We're, okay, we're now on to item six dot two. Hearing to consider approving an amended and restated disposition and development agreement with Red Bear Property Management, Inc. for development of downtown commercial uses, authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement and all other necessary documents to implement that agreement and to conform the Stockman Park easement to this project and others on the park site. Can we have the staff presentation, please?
Yes, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council, this is once again your city manager, Mariana Matasheva. Our second public hearing tonight, item 6.2, will be presented by planning manager Steve Stewart. Mr. Stewart?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. So it was about four years ago this evening in 2018 when the city council approved the initial disposition and development agreement with Red Bear, Inc. for developing the expanded commercial uses around Blacksmith Square consistent with the council's approved downtown plan. Since the adoption of that date, we've had some uncertainty with the couple of referendums that changed the development standards on the site. And a bit to, due to the pandemic caused some delay. Over that time, the project has also been refined. So we're here tonight to just talk about those briefly and present an amended and restated disposition and development agreement to you tonight. So the, the property subject or under the development agreement before you this evening is the commercial parcels here framing Stockman's Park that's complete. So it consists of two standalone, one separate building here. This is the existing building on the corner of Railroad Avenue and Livermore Avenue, South Livermore Avenue. This is also the existing building where Tap 25 and Prince and Pints are located. There'll be a new addition to that building. And then a new standalone two-story building with a roof deck framing Stockman's Park that are part of the development. And that's the rendering that was on the previous slide. The slide shows some of the deal components, which includes sale of the city-owned properties to Red Bear Property Management, Inc., Property Management, Inc., construction of just under 13,000 square feet of commercial retail space, a building design that is compatible with Blacksmith Square and actively interfaces with Stockman's Park, large windows and outdoor dining and display areas opening right onto the park to activate that northeastern portion of the park. Also contributes to the maintenance district for maintaining Stockman's Park over time. It will provide public restrooms available to the general public during the early, early hour, or not early morning, but the early parts of the day into the early evening. And then the document before includes a schedule, an updated schedule of performance that has a target of closing escrow in the middle of, of November next month with construction starting in the spring of 2023 and finishing in about a year's time. And with that, staff is recommending that the council find the project consistent with the previously adopted addendums to the 2004 Downtown Specific Plan Environmental Impact Report and the 2009 Subsequent Environmental Impact Report, determine the properties are exempt from the Surplus Land Act. And we did get confirmation from the state housing community development department that they are in fact exempt under their provisions. And then adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement and all other necessary documents, including amendments, minor amendments to the easement to accommodate the new development of the site. That concludes the staff presentation. Mr. Mike Madden, the president of Red Bear Property, Inc. and his project manager, Otis Snowstrand, are here this evening. And I believe Mr. Madden has a few words if, unless you have questions for staff at this time.
Ready to hear from Mr. Madden.
Honorable Mayor, members of the council, we are, we're very excited to be here tonight, finally, with a finalized, amended, updated agreement to get this building built. Tonight is a big night for us and I'd like to take this opportunity to express some thanks and gratitude. I'd like to start broadly with the people of Livermore. And I'd like to thank them for supporting their downtown. And the people of Livermore have not only supported their downtown, but they've supported the leadership of the town as they've developed a vision and committed the resources it takes to develop and maintain a first-class and even world-class downtown. And I'll also like to thank the people of Livermore for embracing Blacksmith Square. When we bought it, it was just the old V and G muffler shop and we had no idea what we were going to do with it. But I'll never forget the night my dad called me. He used to watch these meetings on TV religiously. And he says, are you, are you watching Livermore? They're, they're talking about Blacksmith Square. And when we took on the Livermore Valley Plaza or the Rose Hotel in Pleasanton, we kind of had an idea what we were getting into. But being known as the family who developed Blacksmith Square came as a bit, bit of a surprise, a very pleasant surprise. I'd like to acknowledge and thank your staff. Your staff is fantastic. From daily dealings with Steve Stewart and Paul Spence and regular meetings with Mike Pato. And as we got here to the finish line with the city attorney, Jason, everyone, everyone has been fantastic every step of the way. So I really appreciate working with your, your staff. You've got a good one. When COVID hit, your staff reached out to me and asked, what can we do to help your restaurants stay open? What, what do they need? What can we do? And they rolled up their sleeves and we all got through it. Here in Livermore, you never hear, we can't do that. You always hear, let's see what we can do. That attitude comes from the top. So I'd like to express the thanks to the city council. I'd like to thank you also for making a true commitment to making downtown Livermore great. And it's a real commitment. Downtown is important to City Hall and that commitment can be seen and felt every day. I'd also like to thank my team, Otis Snowstrand and my architects and engineers. They've done a hell of a job and we're truly excited about how our plans have turned out. I'd also like to publicly thank David and Darcy Kent. It was David who called me up one day and just asked, how would you like to expand Blacksmith Square? And it was Darcy who did the initial sketches of what an expansion might look like and how it might lay out. But ideas and visions are the easy part. At the end of the day, somebody needs to lean on people a bit and put a foot into some behinds, if you know what I mean. And that's someone in this case, and I wish you were here, Mr. Mayor. That person has been you. The fact that we're here tonight getting ready to expand Blacksmith Square and add yet another great project to the fabric of Livermore's downtown is directly attributable to your efforts and visions and how you leaned on it and how you leaned on it early and often. You saw what this could be and you weren't going to stop until it got done. And tonight, here we are. I'm sorry you're not here, but I'd like to publicly thank you for your efforts and getting us here to the finish line. So it's great to be here before you tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, Mike. I'm not there because I think I'm catching something that my wife got when she was in Japan and I didn't want to spread it around. So, but thank you so much for your, your kind words and actually your vision for having put Blacksmith Square together in the first place. And then for all your family does for our city. I mean, it's incredible. And just think where we'd be if, if, if everyone with your wherewithal was doing that. So really appreciate what you've done, your commitment to the city. And above all, what all that you do is real quality. And I love the, the renderings. And I remember when we first met many years ago, you were talking about how you wanted to have a second story restaurant. Well, now you got the second story and the third on top of it. So it's, it's really wonderful. So thank you. Thank you. I think at this point, I, I need to go next to the public hearing. And do we have anybody who wishes to address us on the topic?
Yes, we do, Mayor. Our next speaker is Lisa Tramovich, followed by Zoom speakers.
Lisa Tramovich, thanks for having me back. Honorable Mayor, council and staff, thank you for all the transparency and all the public engagement that's gone into our work together in support of the progress in our downtown plan. And I'm, I'm really excited to see Red Bear's portion get to move forward. And I want to thank Mike Madden and his team for sticking with it through obviously tough times that we've all been facing. And for them to stick with it and, and keep that vision moving forward is really fantastic. So I simply urge council to approve staff's recommendations so we can keep achieving these wonderful steps on our, our planning process. So thank you very much.
The next speaker is over Zoom. Alan Marling, please unmute yourself.
Mayor, mayor and council members, I'm in favor of the amendments to changing Blacksmith Square and Stockman's Park. I saw the information about proposed changes in the, let's see, Livermore Community Outreach Monthly Newsletter or whatever, whatever it's called. I did appreciate that. The visual images were very reassuring and I was also happy to see Eden Housing as it will actually look, not how the independent wants you to be afraid it will look. Thank you.
Mayor, there are no more requests to speak.
Okay, I see Councilmember Kick.
I just wanted to say, I think this looks great. I am fully in support of the expansion. Spent three great days at Blacksmith Square this weekend. And it really is a hub for local artists. And there are business owners who have been there, maybe not there anymore, now work at some of the other places that are bringing their families back. It was, it, it really is a great place. And to imagine it was just a, an unused empty parcel and now it's a thriving center of, of our community. That's pretty cool to see. So thank you for that. And I look forward to seeing this move forward.
Okay, Councilmember Carling, did you hear me?
Yes, I didn't hear you before, but I do now. So thank you. Yeah, I appreciate all the work that staff has done. And to Mr. Madden, I appreciate you sticking with us. I, I was part of the process four years ago when we first approved it. So four years later, I'm glad to see that we're able to take the next step and very much looking forward to participating in a groundbreaking in the spring of next year. So thanks again.
Councilmember Monroe.
I just want to add my thanks as well and my support for this as, as we bring the full vision of what we saw start five years ago into, into the next stage of completion. I also wanted to say that, that this is, this, the thing that's always inspired me about this is the number of people who came together to collaborate in making this take place. From developers to artists, to scientists, to people who, who, to affordable housing advocates and builders, all of these people came together to make our community better, to build community rather than division. And that really matters a lot. And finally, Mr. Madden, your words to all of us, starting with city staff, brought me to tears. I cannot tell you how moved I am by your appreciation and you're saying it with such completeness. So thank you so much.
Okay, I would add, we've got to remember our stockmen, who were the central to all of this and, and our scientists and the community members such as Alan Burnham. So there were a number of incredible aspects of the community that came together. So I want to just point that out. Vice Mayor Banano.
Yeah, thanks. I won't repeat.
I agree with everything my, my fellow council member said. I was going to just make sure Mr. Madden knew that we do appreciate all your comments about our staff. We, we get those comments a lot, not always in the public like this. So it's really great for them to be able to hear from you while everybody's listening. So thanks so much. I was involved with this four or five years ago. As a planning commissioner and a downtown steering committee member as well, and it just is great. It's happening, continues to happen. We've just got to keep on trucking and, and it's going to be great to see Blacksmith Square. I was also at Blacksmith Square this weekend for several events, and it was just a really awesome weekend to spend in Blacksmith Square and in downtown Livermore. So thanks very much for everything.
Okay. By, uh, Councilmember Monroe.
I just wanted to apologize for forgetting this document. That was terrible since it was absolutely without them, this never would have taken place. I am, I am very embarrassed. So thank you to them as well.
Oh, okay. And so I would just wanted to say again, this is a fabulous project. And also really appreciate all the appreciation and just starting with staff. I, people probably don't understand just how much effort it takes to bring a project to fruition. And the staff made it happen. I, and this isn't the only project that's going on. I mean, there's half a dozen just right around the Stockman's Park. So that, that's great. I, I want to say I first met Mike Madden, I don't know how many, it's a long time ago. But he was kind enough to just educate me on how to think about downtown and redevelopment and what, what to do. And, and what I think is very interesting, I'll just tell this story is he's into how to make something work. And so that gets into how do you handle the garbage? And Mike told me how he, when he travels around, he takes pictures of how people do it. So he does it. But this is, this project not only looks good, but it's going to function well. And I would just want to say again, how much I just want to acknowledge Mike's efforts in making our town really good. So thank you. With that, I'll make the motion for approval. Councilmember Carling.
I'll second that.
Okay. And then could we have, I don't know, if any further discussion? Or we could spend all night thanking Mike, I think, and everyone else. But how about if we have the roll call vote?
Councilmember Carling.
Hi.
Councilmember Kick.
Hi.
Councilmember Monroe.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Banano.
Aye.
Mayor Warner.
Aye. So passes unanimously, and it's going to be fabulous. So thank you, Mr. Madden. We're now on to seven dot one, Matters for Consideration. It's an update on the FY 2123 City Council Goals and Priorities and Equity and Inclusion Work Plan. Can we have a staff presentation, please?
Yes, Honorable Mayor Warner and members of the City Council. This is once again your city manager, Maryana Matasheva, and I will be presenting item seven point one. Let me go ahead and share my screen. Straight to questions. Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, item seven point one is an update on the city's current strategic goals. As you can see before you, there are five areas of strategic priority for the city. Asset management and stormwater, downtown, general plan update, homelessness and affordable housing, as well as modernization, training and workforce enhancements. Just last week, the city's executive team presented an update on city strategic goals to all city employees in our beautiful Bankhead Theater. That update was presented through a pre-recorded video that was done so well and was so informative that we decided to share that video with you today. The video was prepared jointly by our Public Works Department, Community Development Department, as well as Administrative Services Department, and I will play that video in a second. The video is about seven minutes long, and it covers all five priority areas.
Hi, I'm Scott Lanfear, Director of Public Works. The Public Works Department is developing an asset management program to better manage the city's assets. This includes developing a stormwater management program which focuses on the city's stormwater system. Livermore owns over $3 billion worth of assets and requires nearly $40 million a year to maintain a very high level of standard. Currently, we don't have the necessary annual revenue to achieve the highest standard, so we're doing our best with what we have. Over the next few years, we'll be exploring possible additional revenue sources, and hopefully we'll acquire additional funds for asset and stormwater management. The asset management program includes three main components. First, there's data collection and management. Data is entered into a computerized maintenance management system, or CMS, for processing. Livermore is using the NextGen platform to perform this task. NextGen is a GIS friendly database that functions as a warehouse for all of our asset information. Once compiled, the data can be analyzed to determine optimal maintenance, repair and replacement schedules. Finally, we're using a software program called iRisk to create visual content for conveying key decision metrics, such as cost, risk and liability, value and level of service. These visual reports will inform city council, city staff and the public about how to best spend the available revenues in the most optimal fashion. By far, the largest of our assets in terms of value and cost is the city's stormwater system. This is a system of open channels, creeks and arroyos and pipes that convey stormwater runoff to downstream creeks, rivers, and ultimately the San Francisco Bay. The system is relatively old and requires significant annual maintenance. Over the years, there have been ownership changes and maintenance has been shifted between public agencies. This makes it challenging to make sure all parts of the system are receiving the appropriate maintenance.
Hi, I'm Paul Spence, the city's Director of Community Development. I'm here today to share with you some information on the work we're doing related to council goals on downtown, general plan update and affordable housing and homelessness. For downtown, staff has been working to complete the steps needed to implement the downtown plan approved by the council in early 2018. Today, we'll be highlighting projects that saw significant progress this last year. This year, the council approved an amended disposition and development agreement, or DDA for short, for the hotel, as well as the project site and architectural plans. The council also approved a DDA for the Black Box Theater this year. And in early September, we closed escrow on the sale of this property to Spark, the local nonprofit that will operate this 150-seat flexible theater space. Design is underway on this project, and Spark is in the process of fundraising. In addition, the council approved minor updates to a DDA for Eden Housing this year, and in early September, closed escrow on the sale of this property to Eden. Staff is also working with a local developer on expansion of Blacksmith Square, which will be the new retail and restaurant uses surrounding Stockman's Park. An updated DDA is returning to council this fall. Concept plans will be approved at staff level, and we expect to close escrow in late October or early November. The High Street Garage is an expansion of the existing Railroad Avenue Garage and adds 274 new spaces to the existing 500 space garage. In addition, city staff's been working on final plans, financing and bid documents for the L Street Garage, which is planned to start construction after the first of the year. This 452 space garage will be open for, for operation in late summer of 2024. A general plan update should be done every 15 to 20 years. Our last update was in 2003, and so we are now in the midst of updating our plan. And it is a fantastic opportunity to think about our vision for the future and how we'd like to grow and change over the next 20 years. The general plan covers a wide range of policy areas as shown here. To find out more about the general plan update, check out our website at ImagineLivermore2045.org. We've also had some significant accomplishments related to affordable housing and homelessness. We completed upgrades to the multi-service center to meet requirements for access health and to improve the building's accessibility. We worked with Goodness Village on the development of 28 townie homes for the homeless. Goodness Village has secured an additional $6 million in funding, so we'll be working with them in the next year on expansion plans. We provided financial support for the redevelopment of the Shiloh Domestic Violence Shelter to increase its capacity. And we worked with Access Community Health to acquire a new building for a dental clinic for low-income families here in Livermore. We worked on several new affordable housing projects. Pacific Avenue Senior Apartments will be developed behind the library. They are fully entitled and will apply for tax credit financing next spring. Vineyard 2.0 is also under construction and will provide housing and services for community members experiencing homelessness. And here we have some images of the Avante Apartments, which are now open and will provide 44 affordable units for people with developmental disabilities. We've also provided funding for shared housing for those with disabilities served by Tri Valley Reach. And the city has secured approximately 3.6 million for homeless families in coordination with the housing authority, and has also secured another 5.5 million from the state for the Vineyard and Pacific Avenue projects.
Hi, I'm Tina Olson. I'm your administrative services director. I'm here to update you on the progress we've made implementing the city's modernization goal. The city clerk's office was able to add in several major functions with the inclusion of Zoom, which increased our availability to a larger audience. We now have on-demand transcription with translation services available and the use of Granicus, which provides a better experience for meeting attendees. Additionally, we added recording capability to the Mendenhall Room, including wireless microphones that deploy in seconds and Zoom functionality. The second project is the Granicus Peak Management System. This project brought consistency to all city boards and commissions, aligning them with the city council format for agendas and meeting conduct. Prior to this project, each body acted independently with regards to their meeting, agenda layout, meeting location, and how they conducted their meetings. By moving all bodies to the Mendenhall Meeting Room, we now provide a professional and comfortable meeting location, better accessibility for residents and consistent, high-quality audio recording. The final project is the Nucleus, the city's new SharePoint site. The Nucleus serves as a central hub for all the city's SharePoint sites that provides easy access to finance, city clerk and human resources forms and citywide systems. The Nucleus completes a major phase of the city's digital transformation. By moving our core data to the cloud, we can operate from any place on the planet that has an internet connection, and we don't require city hardware to do it. It completely redefines our ability to operate in the event of a disaster, protects our data behind the firewalls of one of the largest companies in the world, and gives us unlimited options for protecting, maintaining and using our data.
Mayor and City Council, this concludes the brief video, and hopefully you will agree that the seven-minute video was very informative and was able to distill a lot of details that are included with this agenda item in a relatively short video presentation. And I wanted to thank our executive team for collaborating on it. As importantly, and I think as impressive, in my opinion, was staff's ability to present a summary that is before you on the screen and that will be available online. A summary of progress made on the city's strategic priorities. It's a two-page summary that we were able to produce this year for you that will be available to the public online as well as in print. I also wanted to touch very briefly on progress made in the area of diversity, equity and inclusion. There are five strategic priorities in that area having to do with community engagement and specifically Key to the City Program, policing, housing, collaboration with partner agencies and community organizations, as well as recruitment for advisory bodies. And before you on the slide is progress that has been made in those areas in the last few months. We are about to relaunch the key of the, the Key to the City Program in 2023. In the area of policing, we established the Chief's Advisory Group of Residents, as well as faith-based leadership group. In the area of housing, the housing element, informational video, as well as story map have been added to the general plan website, enhancing our residents' ability to understand what the general plan and the housing element are all about. In addition, we have added housing presentations to community groups that will begin in December of this year. In addition, Community Services Day has been scheduled for May of 2023. We took a pause due, due to COVID and will be coming back to re-engage with our community in May. We're also working diligently on youth and government initiatives. And lastly, I am pleased to share with the council and the community that we're finalizing government one-on-one video series that will soon be posted online and will provide informational overview of city departments, city functions and information about the city in general for any resident, any business owner, any candidate for city council to be educated on. What I also wanted to share with you, Mayor and City Council, is when it comes to diversity, equity and inclusion, our next steps will include broader reach into three categories. One is city employees and analyzing and diversifying cities recruitment pool, as well as community engagement, continuing to engage the community in culturally appropriate, culturally sensitive ways, as well as business participation, looking for ways to encourage additional business participation in city government as well as city contracting. Last but not least, I wanted to acknowledge and really emphasize for the city council as well as the community that the update before you today, as comprehensive as it is, only covers a small segment of what happens in the city. So much more is happening on a regular basis. We just heard earlier today about the climate action update. Our Administrative Services Department is working very hard on budget development. We met earlier today with staff to look at 192 million of capital projects that are happening throughout the city. The point is, there's so much happening in the city. And early in 2023, staff, the executive team, is going to bring before the city council a comprehensive strategic plan that will allow us to demonstrate all the work that is happening right now and will be happening in the next two to five years in the city. That comprehensive strategic plan is going to be organized in five priority areas that are before you. A safe community that thrives, economy that prospers, environmental legacy, inclusive and inviting spaces, and a city that works. And that discussion about the strategic plan that includes all of the city's departments will help us frame a discussion on the city's budget. I believe that concludes our presentation, and myself, as well as the executive team are here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. At this point, I'll go to a public comment on the item. Do we have anybody who wishes to address us?
Yes, Mayor, there's one request to speak over Zoom. Alan Burnham, please unmute yourself.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. Homelessness is one of the most important problems facing Livermore. Today, I read through many comments on Nextdoor. I saw a wide range of opinions, understandings and misunderstandings ranging from anger to compassion. And thankfully, a few messages giving a better understanding of what the city can and cannot do and what it is doing. I wish more people understood the latter, including that the city has significant financial and legal constraints. Perhaps the city could do more education, but the bigger problem may be the unwillingness on the part of some to understand what is readily available. My wife and I are owners of a downtown business, and we deal with the detritus of homeless people on a weekly basis. When necessary, we have called upon the city to deal with problematic individuals and to clean up large messes. And I'm very pleased with the city's response programs. Response may not be immediate, but it is reasonably prompt. I am also pleased that the city has made concrete progress in, on providing more than symptomatic treatment of homelessness, including homes with wraparound services that can provide more lasting solutions in, in most cases. Unfortunately, it's too easy to blame all of society's ills on homelessness. Although many of the hardcore homeless have a drug problem, it is also true that most people with a drug problem, problem are not homeless. Also, while homeless persons are large generators of trash, most litter bugs are not homeless. I wish I had solutions for the wider scope of people's careless personal behavior, but unfortunately I don't. Finally, the presentations this evening showed the wide range of activity, activities the staff work on. on, often under a lot of negative publicity that they have to work against to get the right answer. I commend their effort, and we are fortunate as a city to have such dedicated staff. Thank you.
Mayor, there are no more requests to speak?
Okay, thank you. I'll close the public comment on this 7.1 and come back to the council. Councilmember Kick?
Thank you so much for the video. I feel like I've been heard about how important different streams of communication are to getting your point across, and I feel like many more people are likely to tune in to one to five to full seven minutes than they are to read the summary. So I'm really looking forward to more pieces of information like this out in the public, and it's really cool. This is the first time where it's been the full two years of what our goals were and where we're at and to be at this point in the process. So thank you for all the work. It's really astonishing how much has gotten done in such a little time. So thank you. More videos, please.
Councilmember Carling.
Yes, thank you. I just, one question I had that I didn't see regarding the E&amp;I policing, and that is the mental health clinician. Could you bring us up to speed on that, please?
Absolutely, Councilmember Carling. I believe that efforts underway to recruit and hire for both the part-time as well as the full-time clinician, so we're in progress of recruiting for both positions.
Great, thank you very much. I know that was an important outcome of the E&amp;I workshop that Councilmember Monroe and I participate in. I want to make some more comments. And first of all, I want to thank the staff for such a complete update on the goals and priorities, and I want to briefly focus on one of those goals, and that is homelessness and affordable housing. There's been some recent campaign rhetoric suggesting that new leadership is needed to deal with the homeless issue in Livermore. I've been on three different councils, and each council has prioritized the homeless issue in Livermore. In fact, Councilmember Monroe and I headed a homeless subcommittee that establishes short-term, midterm, and long-term goals for addressing the needs of our unsheltered community. Setting policy is what we do as elected officials in this community. Staff then carries out the direction council sets by using its existing funding within the city, coupled with financial opportunities that are offered from the county, the state, and federal grants. Mr. Spence did a nice job of taking away some of my achievements that I wanted to point out, but I'm going to add a few others and that he didn't mention that I think help illustrate the breadth of what we are doing for those living with homelessness. Livermore received over $325,000 in the state homeless housing assistance program for crisis intervention. The city partners on a regular basis with Caltrans and local service providers for regular encampment cleanups. As of August 2022, nearly $5 million has come from federal COVID-19 rent relief for Livermore tenants. The low-income rental properties on Blue Bell Drive are scheduled for rehabilitation starting this month. The units at Lehehe Square are being set aside for homeless families as the current tenants move out. Since March 2021, 10 households, including two Livermore Valley Joint Unified School District schoolteachers, have purchased affordable homes through the city's Inclusionary Housing Program. The other items on my list were mentioned by Mr. Spence, so I won't continue, so I'll stop there. I think if you go to the Agenda Packet, you'll see many more accomplishments that city staff have achieved over the last two years. Could we do more? Of course. The limit is funding availability, not the commitment or the imagination of what could be done. And that is to the credit of city staff, particularly folks like Eric Oranga and Josh Thurman, our homeless liaison officers Dave and Andy, and our nonprofit partners such as the Livermore Housing Authority, the Housing Consortium of the East Bay, City Serve and Abode, and many others. I hope you will agree that the breadth of the examples that I've provided are impressive, and I appreciate everything that everybody has done. So thank you very much for this opportunity.
Councilmember Monroe.
Well, I want to start by appreciating my fellow council member for that comprehensive look at homelessness and affordable housing. Given some of the rhetoric, it feels like a much-needed both support, pointing out of the work that the city has done, and just pointing out the work that the city has done, how difficult it is, and just how much we do and how efficiently we do it. So thank you very much for that. More broadly, this has, over the past several years, this meeting in which the work done by this city staff is discussed in detail, is one of, it's got to be the high point. We have a staff that works hard, does a huge amount, as Councilmember Carling pointed out, in detail for just one area. And frankly, I feel is underappreciated by this city. Thank you so much for what you do. Thank you for every aspect of that, of what you presented. I will echo what Councilmember Kick said. It was nice, I like writing, like words, but boy, it was the presentation, the person, the way the personalities came through, and the passion that each member of the team shows for what they do really comes through in the video. So thank you for that as well.
Vice Mayor Banano.
I won't repeat, I agree with everything I just heard and appreciate Councilmember Carling's pointing out some things that we sometimes neglect to see, all the work that's being done in that area. So I just wanted to say, I thought the video was great. I think there's some very, really some unhidden, unmined talent, voiceover talent, and we've got to be careful, we're not lose staff to like, I don't know, major motion pictures or something. But I would also like to say, we thank everyone, but I'd like to thank in particular our city manager, Mariana Marischeva, who I think brought this innovative idea to us, and the idea of improving communications using new tools, I think is something we helped for when she joined us four, or five, or six months ago, and I just wanted to appreciate that very particularly. So I'm really, really impressed with all the work you all have done in this city and really proud to be some part of it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to also say, really, you know, as we've gone through this over the years, and it's always an astounding amount of work that staff does because we have a really good staff, and I do also appreciate the upgrade in the presentation format. It's a lot more interesting, I'll just say, than looking at, I say, a spreadsheet list of everything. This is great, really, really good. And I think what we see is that not only is it easier for us to understand, but our community, and that it's preserved in a way that's better than just a normal council meeting presentation. So I think that's really good. Wanted to add to what Councilmember Carling said about the approach to the homelessness. This is something that's been going on for a long time, and I think Councilmember Carling really did a great job of enumerating everything that's going on in addition to what was in the staff presentation. The other thing I'll just mention is, in addition to what Livermore itself does, it's within the context of our broader community here in the Bay Area. And with the county, there's an alignment on a framework with the various cities in the county and the supervisors to a comprehensive approach, and that's necessary as we look, as we can get more money for the programs that way, and they can be more effective if they're coordinated. So I just wanted to add that to it, and that's real good progress at that level. So I think great presentation. We've, we're now, we don't vote on anything. Anybody else want to make any further comments? Otherwise, we'll close 7.1 with another good thank you for all you've done. And it's nine o'clock, so how about if we take our nine o'clock break until 9:10? And it's nine o'clock, so how about if we take our uh, nine o'clock break until nine ten?
Mayor and council members, please stand by and TV thirty will count us in. Five, four, three, two, one. Mayor, you are live.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good, I just want to confirm. So thank you, uh, welcome back from our break. Uh, we're now on to seven dot two, discussion and direction regarding Livermore Development Code, Chapter four dot oh six. Our signed standards for temporary signs, could we have the staff presentation, please?
Yes, Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council, this is once again your City Manager, Mariana Marasheva. And seven point two is going to be presented by our Planning Manager, Steve Stewart. Mr. Stewart?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council members, again, Steve Stewart, Planning Manager. And just a brief presentation on temporary signs. So the City Council and staff are receiving complaints that campaign signs continue to be vandalized, stolen, and installed inconsistent with city regulations and various pieces and parts of those signs are ending up in the city streetscape. The cityscape in general. So we're uh, well, we're gonna print, present this item for you this evening and ask for some direction on temporary signs. So you may recall this matter was before you in the summer of 2020, when the City Council initiated a code amendment for temporary signs in response to those complaints of vandalism, theft, and blight. The planning commission, the item went to the planning commission, the planning commission considered the staff's recommendations that are up on the screen. And the uh, planning commission ended up adopting this uh, um, staff recommendation, but uh, did modify the days uh, for signs to be displayed uh, to ninety days or before the event. Or the signs could be uh, removed, or sorry, that's the signs could be displayed no sooner than ninety days before the event. And that only A-frame signs would be permitted in the right-of-way downtown. And sorry, the planning, this was staff's recommendation, the planning commission did end up with uh, going with the staff recommendation, but adjusting the display time to thirty days uh, before the event. The current regulations are on the screen before you tonight, and the council did end up eliminating a time of day restriction that would have limited the display time daily to nine AM to five PM. That staff had recommended, um, and the commission forwarded to the council, staff eliminated that provision. Uh, increased the number of days before an event for signs to be displayed to sixty. And the other amendments, uh, minor, our minor amendments are shown on the screen. And again, those regulations are in place today. So the City Council and staff continue to receive those complaints. Uh, staff is recommending the council discuss a Livermore Development Code regarding temporary signs uh, to address these ongoing issues. And the council could consider the the planning commission's previous recommendations for limiting the hours per day for displaying temporary signs in the public right-of-way uh, to nine to five PM daily, and adjusting the time period uh, before an event for displaying temporary signs to ninety days. And again, staff would uh, also recommend any type of amendments that might come to remain new uh, content neutral, applying to non-commercial temporary signs and commercial residential and industrial zoning districts, regardless of content and that, the the content neutral approach uh, as described here is the most defensible in terms of free speech law. And then the downtown plan area, commercial and non-commercial signs in the right-of-way would remain prohibited, uh, except for A-frame signs under certain conditions. If the council chose, chooses to provide direction for new amendments that would differ from the planning commission, uh, those would take a little bit longer to uh, get back to the council in the form of an ordinance and second reading. If you uh, stuck to the provisions that the planning commission recommended, we may be able to get that uh, the draft amendments and ordinance to you uh, one meeting earlier than than the other case. So that concludes my presentation, happy to answer questions.
Okay, thank you, at this point, I'll go to a public comment, does anyone wish to address us? Were you able to hear me, I asked a public comment at this point?
We cannot hear you, Mr. Mayor.
Oh.
I can hear, but it seems like the room can't hear, can you hear any of us on Zoom?
Yes, Councilmember Kick, we're able to hear you, but not the mayor.
Oh, okay.
And I also could hear, I could hear all of you.
Um, he was asking if there's any public comments on this item.
Uh, how about now, does this work? So I might have to have um, Councilmember Kick relay my comments, I don't know why things have failed here.
Mayor, we can hear you now.
Oh, okay. All right, so good, it it, is there anyone who wishes to address us and public comment on the site?
Yes, Mayor, first speaker is Kristi Wang, followed by Mike Frank, followed by speakers over Zoom.
Good evening, Mayor Warner, Vice Mayor Bonanno, and council members. I'm Kristi Wong, and I'm here tonight to speak specifically about campaign signs. I'm not sure how this relates to other types of signs, but I'm speaking as a private citizen, but someone who's had experience running my own campaign, but also helping um, put out signs for a lot of other campaigns. I was excited to see this item on the agenda because I, this is something I think about every election season when the sign starts to start to show up. And I just hate these campaign signs. And they're an environmental hazard because they can't be recycled, I did a lot of research into that. They're an equity problem for candidates because they're very expensive to buy. And I say this as someone who has a shed full of signs from my last campaign that I can reuse for the next one if I decide to run again. So I'm offering to give up my advantage. Um, and lastly, I think we can all agree that they're an eyesore. I'm here to advocate for tightening up our sign ordinance in two ways, by location and by time. Location-wise, I like to see signs only on private property. And people, when I'm, when I've talked to community members about this, people have said the signs are how they learn about candidates. I'd love to see voter education methods that are more substantive than the candidate's name, the office are running in their favorite color. Uh, the office are seeking in their favorite color. And so perhaps the city can offer in lieu of this um, a place online where candidates can share a page about themselves. Or maybe information can be shared at our public libraries during election season. And some people have said limiting signs to private property precludes people in multi-unit housing from expressing their support for a candidate. So maybe sign, uh, campaigns can print window signs and those can be allowed in windows. Another possibility is to allow one small public space in each of our four districts where um, signs can be placed. And there should be limits on, you know, one per campaign with limit, uh, size limits. Um, there are a lot of creative options that can be figured out. Time-wise, now that many people vote by mail or turn in their ballots early, it's become unclear when the clock for sixty days begins to count down. This year, there were, one campaign put out signs all over the city in, I think it was on August tenth or something. Um, the sixty days is too long anyhow, I think we all hit sign fatigue around day thirty. So if you allow signs in public areas, my suggestion would be to allow them, you know, starting a lot closer to election, maybe one week before the ballots drop. I appreciate this council's thoughtfulness and experience, and I know you'll make good decisions. I'm here to put in a word for restricting campaign signs in public spaces. They're a menace to the environment, to the equity of candidates running for election, and to our eyes. And before I end, I know this is um, oh, my time's up, I just want to thank our three uh, people who are terming out for all of your service to the public, thank you.
Next speaker is Mike Frank, followed by speaker over Zoom.
Hi, thank you, Mayor Warner, Vice Mayor Bonanno, council members. I just want to echo the notion that the campaign signs are clearly, I don't think it's very controversial, they're clearly becoming an eyesore. I have some familiarity with the regulations. And uh, you know, I understand they can be, there's some subtleties, uh, there's some subjectivity, corners fifty feet. It seems to me that if you drive around, what you're seeing on the sides of our streets is evidence that it's too hard, it's too much effort, it's too much subjectivity to enforce the regulations that are already there. And uh, so in light of that, I would offer that making the rules more complex would probably, well, I don't know, would 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 make enforcement potentially even harder. I would offer up that simplifying the rules around signage might make the rules more enforceable. I can only imagine that trying to cover Livermore from corner to corner every day for certain times, trying to measure signs, look at for violations would take a lot of work. Uh, you know, for example, if signs were not allowed along public roads, but were allowed in specified public areas, you could call it democracy gardens or free speech zones, and you could have signs there. It would, you know, I think that offers some other advantages in terms of equity. Uh, there may be downsides, those are for, I'm sure for you to weigh the pros and cons, but I think it would address a specific immediate problem, which is the state of our town in the two months leading up to elections. Uh, so yeah, thank you for hearing that, and uh, I appreciate your attention.
Next request to speak is over Zoom, Lori Sousa, please unmute yourself.
Good evening, Mayor Warner, City Council. Thank you for considering the staff recommendation that the City Council discussed the provisions in the Livermore Development Code regarding temporary signs placed on public property and in the designated public right-of-way. I welcome your review and discussion. Recent election campaigns have shown a disregard for the current provisions by campaigns installing election signs earlier than allowed and other violations. It's clear that residents don't respect the provisions that allow election campaigns to post these signs temporarily in right-of-way because the signs are frequently destroyed and removed without permission. I think these are indications that the provisions are no longer effective. The signs are not recyclable, so they must all go to the landfill. I'm confident you will make amendments that are needed to make this a more workable set of rules, thank you.
Mayor, there are no more requests to speak on this item?
Okay, I'll close the public comment on this and uh, let's start with Councilmember Kick.
So I just want to start by saying that um, I don't think that there is a solution um, that can be brainstormed that could fix all of our problems. However, I do think the recommendation um, that was originally presented to the council in 2020 is a very good start. Um, I, I think that we should keep our discussion to the scope of simply the signs um, in, in all aspects, uh, not specifically campaigning, I think there's a lot of creative work we could do um, around campaign equity. Um, but I don't think tonight is the, the time for that, and I am committed to continue to work on campaign equity in the, in the two years I have left. Um, so as, as I see it, the recommendations um, that were brought to council in 2020 seem to me to be a good first step in decreasing the amount of trash um, that's in our community while still allowing anybody to be able to advertise what they wish, um, as they wish, um, within specified timeframes. I hope that was clear, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Bonanno.
Yeah, I, I, I think that what we have right now is, it's completely unacceptable to me with respect to political signs. Um, I, I honestly don't think that the uh, past recommendation to have signs, thousands of signs, go up and down every day, I just don't believe it. I don't think it's viable, and before I'd be willing to support it, I'd need some evidence that it's been done successfully. I could be wrong, I don't think I'm wrong, I just can't believe that that will actually happen every day. And then we'll be in a situation where we'll have groups that are, you know, once, once one group stops pulling their signs down every night, every group will, and then it'll all be on the city to enforce or not enforce. I, I, I just do not feel it's viable, and again, for me to support it, I'd have to have some, some stronger evidence um, that I don't think staff is prepared, nor, nor should they have been expected to prepare that for tonight. So that's where I stand on that, I would like to see, as has been suggested, all political signage, because that's what we're talking about here, I'm talking about campaign signs, political signage, I don't know if I'm supposed to say that, but that is what we're talking, that is the problem we're trying to solve. We're not trying to stop real estate agents from advertising their own houses, we're not trying to rent restaurants, putting A-frames out, you know, telling us about their daily specials, that's not the issue. I would like to see them restricted to private property, period, full stop. Now, I've been told that legally, there's some potential challenge to that, and I get that. And again, I think that just, we need to give our staff some additional time to uh, conduct the research to know if that's a hard, you know, that's a hard barrier, or if it's something that other successive cities have done, and if there's been challenges or not. Um, I don't like the way our city looks, I think, you know, I, I walk and run a lot, I see metal stakes, the signs are gone or in the bushes, the stakes are still sticking up there, just presenting hazards to, to people, it's just, I think we need to do something. I don't know if we're prepared to give specific enough direction tonight to have you come back in the near term with an ordinance that's, that's written um, supporting what I would support. Um, I just think our public comments were all spot on, and um, I think if there are legal issues and if there are implementation issues, and if there are examples where other things have worked, I'd like to hear them before I'd be willing to support what's currently on the table. Thank you.
Councilmember Monroe.
Um, so I was present when we discussed this the first time. Um, I understand the concerns that Councilmember uh, Bonanno raised. Um, I'm persuaded that actually, this is a, a relatively um, it, it would not be feasible to take the signs up and take them down. Uh, therefore, yes, if it falls on the city to remove them, they're removed, and they're removed. Um, or they don't go up. So I'm persuaded that this is um, effectively a workaround, if you want to call it that, um, that um, deals with the problem that everybody acknowledges with uh, and that creates, um, it's equity problem, it's uh, divides the city, it is expensive, you know, all, all, it's trash, all the reasons people have said. This strikes me as being um, something that can work and, and I would support it, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Carling.
Yes, thank you, I agree with Vice Mayor, I, I think we all know what the problem is. And I would not support taking up, putting down every day, uh, because I, I do agree with my colleague that somebody would abuse it and then everybody else would consider abusing it. I also like what Mr. Frank said, to simplify, I, so for example, I think designating a spot within each district just wouldn't work either, because again, I think, first of all, we get into a big argument, maybe not an argument, big discussion about what, what available space are we going to provide in District one, two, three, and four? And there'd be a host of opinions about that. And so again, I think simplifying it And so again, I think simplifying it, dealing with the political signs, and it seems like that's not such a hard issue because we know who's going to run, right? These people have an FPPC number, and the propositions or, or measures have an FPPC number. And so they're required to put that on a campaign sign now, so we know who those people are, and I guess I'm willing to you know, face a potential free speech lawsuit if we can simplify by focusing on the political signs and addressing that in a reasonably straightforward, honest way, because that's what we're trying to solve. So again, I, I agree with Vice Mayor, I think, and I just think that putting it up and taking them down is not going to work, and I'm willing to spend a little more time to get this right and, and move forward that way. Thank you.
Councilmember Kick?
Kim Sealy is here, correct?
Yes, that's correct. I'm here.
I'm like, I'm not, I'm making sure I'm addressing the right person. Can you clarify why doing a non, it's not non-denominational, it's non-specific ordinance is less risky legally overall for the city, and why choosing a choosing an option that would provide less legal risk is financially maybe the smarter one that a city might make, and that's, and why that was chosen, what was discussed in your office to make that a recommendation? I have another question after that, too, so.
Okay, sure. Yes, content-neutral regulations are the most defensible regulations in this arena for First Amendment challenge. So that is why it was recommended that the proposed ordinance that came to the city a couple of years ago to the council addressed commercial and non-commercial signs. It was meant to be content-neutral, so it treated those signs the same regardless of the message that they sent. That is, that tends to be the most defensible. When you do a content-based regulation, you are subject to strict scrutiny. It's very difficult to withstand a challenge when you are subject to strict scrutiny. When you have a content-neutral regulation, you are subject to intermediate scrutiny. The city is given more deference, and it is a, is a bit of an easier threshold to satisfy. So it's just a, a weighing of, you know, potentially how defensible a particular regulation is. Now, I will say, I believe in 2015, there was a case, a US Supreme Court case that kind of put all of the First Amendment sign regulation kind of at issue for everyone, and people were worried about content-based regulations, and so that, and that was in 2015, and I think it's a case out of Arizona. In, I think in 2021 or 2022, a recent case kind of modified that and brought that holding back, but still, the safest route, the most defensible route, is a content-neutral, and that was the thinking behind the proposed ordinance, was to treat commercial and non-commercial the same. That is not to say you can't, you know, if, if a jurisdiction singles out political signs, they, they may do that. They may have specific regulations for political signs. However, you would hope in terms of implementing, in terms of the public right-of-way, that a jurisdiction would treat a commercial sign the same as a non-commercial, meaning a garage sale sign the same as a political sign. That's what is preferable for legal challenge, but, you know, that is not necessarily the case in every jurisdiction, and it might be useful for the city to look at, you know, ordinances that have been drafted by jurisdictions, I would say, in the last three years, and to see what has worked in this, in this area, because that is when, you know, post-2015 is when a significant challenge came to signs.
Thank you. That, that was helpful. I also wanted to just, I get why it's content-neutral and, and why that, that makes a lot of sense. I, I also wanted an argument that was made in 2020 was that there's some preference to incumbents if you don't allow signs. My question that I would like to raise is, is there then a preference to business owners who decide to run because they don't need to have a political sign? They could have their business sign up, and so their name, if it's content-neutral, it provides a level of equity that isn't possible because if you're a business owner, you have access to signs in ways that campaign people don't, right? So that's just one more thing. And my last question is, is it possible with the current recommendation approved by Planning Commission? In there, does it still allow staked signs? Staked signs coming in and out I do see as being dangerous and impossible. In that recommendation, does it specify that it's A-frame, or are stakes still allowed in the Planning Commission-approved recommendation?
Yes, Councilmember Kick. The stake signs would still be permitted, and they're defined as paper or plastic mounted on a wood or metal stick pushed or hammered into the ground.
Okay. I think in reality, this is just my opinion, that what would happen is that someone would try to break the rule, all of their signs would be taken down, they wouldn't be given back, and there would be no more putting up and putting down. I think that it would be, make a lot of sense for people to put up and down A-frames if they wish. I, I don't feel comfortable putting us in a position of First Amendment legal challenge, especially considering how messy these elections already get.
Okay, I think it's my turn now. A couple of things, I'll just say I'm not interested in the legal challenge. I'll go with the recommendation of council. I think it's not correct to state that the recommendation was to put the signs up and down every day. That wasn't the recommendation. Frankly, it's to make it unreasonable to, that's the way of preventing it, and it gets us through the content-neutral. There's no recommendation by anyone that a campaign put it up and down every day. And I think Councilmember Kick just hit on something that if in fact there were, there was someone, a campaign that wanted to violate this, they don't get the signs back. So every day, they, you know, people are doing the absurd. They put up a thousand signs every day, and every day they come down, and this doesn't make any sense to anybody. So what I'm suggesting, and what I'm also for, is content-neutral, and that we go with the recommendation from the Planning Commission. I'll also say in my world, in my past life, trying to be perfect is always the enemy of the good, and nothing happens. We have our opportunity to make some progress here. It did pass the Planning Commission, and this isn't the end-all and be-all. This isn't one chance to modify it, and we, and it's done forever. So I suggest we make some incremental progress consistent with staff recommendations of, particularly legal, and that we see how it goes, and then it can be modified. Doesn't have to be perfect, but we know now that what we have is, is terrible. So I think we make progress, and that, I'll just say that by going with the Planning Commission recommendation, we don't have to go through a lot more rigmarole, and certainly the next council can deal with it if there's some real big problem, and that council can take all the time in the world it wants to do all the research and modify it. So this doesn't prevent the next council from improving it, but I suggest we make some progress. So I've heard two other council members suggest that. So I see Vice Mayor Banano wants to say something, but then I'm likely to make a motion.
I, I just want to make my position very clear. I, I feel like I need an example. Before I would approve this, I need an example of where this has worked. I haven't heard single, I, I know of several cities that have banned political signs in public right-of-ways. I'd know of no example of a town or city that's successfully implemented a time window for signs to be put up. So that, that's my position. So it's not to say that so, so while I am interested in progress on this, I'm not interested in going down a path that I just don't think is viable, so I just want to be clear why I oppose it, and think that we should give our staff some time to further research the legal issues. I've heard, I mean, content neutrality, fine, but there are cities that appear in some of the research I've done to be not treating political signage differently. So I'd like to see more information. I won't be on the council, so I get to make my vote and make my position clear, and that's that. So that's, I just wanted to be clear about why I was opposing it.
Yeah, I think we understand that. Councilmember Monroe?
I am wondering if, if, if there are any examples that Ms. Sealy could point to at this point. I don't think I need them, but since Councilmember Banano has asked twice, I'm, I'm wondering if, you know, if that's the case.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that question, Council?
I'm wondering if that, if, if, if there are examples of this, are we the first? I don't mind being the first. I'm just curious.
I am not aware. I did not prepare the actual draft ordinance. I, I am not aware of other examples of other jurisdictions that have these.
As, as I said, I'm, I am, I feel that, you know, we, we, this is certainly not the first time we've been the first, so if we're the first, that's okay with me. I, I define this compelling. If you don't mind, I would make a motion.
I, I see Councilmember Kick wants to say something, and then we can go there. Oh, okay, so go ahead, Councilmember Monroe. You're on mute.
I'm trying to unmute, sorry. So I would like to move staff's recommendation.
Okay. Just to be clear, we, we don't have a recommendation, but you could move that we bring the planning, the previous Planning Commission action back to you.
So let's, yeah, let's, let's be precise here. So we have three things we need to do in order to go down the path we're on. One is, the first thing that I think I've heard three of us say is that we're willing to go with the content-neutral and not risk the legal against the staff. That's the first thing. The second thing is, we haven't been clear on the time window in advance of the date of the election.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and that, I think we've heard the community members say they wanted a shorter period, others want something else. For myself, I would make it sixty days in advance of the election date. Now, that's somewhat of a compromise, so that gets us the signs up there for sixty days rather than ninety days. And the third item is I would go with the time window during the day that was specified. So those are the three elements of what we're talking about giving guidance to staff to come back with as a item for, you know, the next step in the process. Am I?
Great, I second that.
Okay, and Councilmember Kick?
I just have a clarifying question for staff. Is it possible at this point to ask for ask for the removal of stake signs being allowed, just because they do seem to pose a hazard when just the stakes are up? Or would that mean going all the way back to Planning Commission?
This is Kim Sealy, Senior Assistant City Attorney. That would be an additional change or modification to the ordinance that went to Planning Commission, and so that would need to go back to Planning Commission for consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now, the, the third, the other question is that Councilmember Kick mentioned it, like, highlighted it, was the fact that if the signs are put up in violation, that they're confiscated. Is that something that has to go back to the Planning Commission?
I'm sorry, what did he say?
I don't believe that would trigger a return to the Planning Commission.
Okay, so then there are four items. One that we're talking about, sixty days in advance of election day is the window. The time window as specified during the day that, and that, you know, we're, we're doing this because of the content neutrality, and if there's a sign put up in violation, it will be confiscated. And that what happens is if anybody puts a sign, and the way I would look at it, anybody puts a sign up in violation, they forfeited the right to that sign, and anyone can take it down. So anyway, so that's my motion or whatever direction, and I want to see if we have this vote on this, call the question. So let's just have a roll call on this. I think it's been moved and seconded.
Mayor, just to clarify, we have you moving the item and Councilmember Monroe seconding?
Yeah, I think we flipped it.
Yeah, we did.
Councilmember Carling?
Since he actually knew what he was doing.
I didn't hear the vote.
It's been moved and seconded. Are we, are we able to have discussion on the item?
Yes.
So I'd like to understand if it comes back to us, will it come back to, so what, what I'm hearing is the motion is to bring back, as the mayor just specified, what the Planning Commission approved. Will the staff have adequate time between now and the time it gets brought back to give us some additional research?
So it depends in part on which meeting it comes to. We can bring back something that went previously, essentially to the council. This came to the council previously, and we can bring it back to you again in relatively short order if there aren't significant changes, but if you wanted us to do research, I think that might push us back a meeting because the turnarounds are very quick. So that would probably, if you wanted additional research, I think that, at that point, we would probably come to the meeting of the twenty twenty-fourth, I believe it is, of November, and then the second reading would be the, the first meeting in December, the twenty-eighth, twenty-eighth of November, and the first meeting in December, which I think is the twelfth. That would give us a bit of time for more research.
So I'll, I'll modify my motion to make it come back the first meeting in November.
So, sorry, I just want to, for Councilmember Banano, are you looking for examples or research about other options? Because I think if it's just examples of cities who've done this successfully, then I don't think that I mean, I don't want to speak for staff, but there's a difference between finding a city who's, who's, who has done this successfully versus give me twenty other options. Can you just make that request clear?
Yeah, I'd like some examples, an example of a city that's implemented what's been proposed here successfully. And, and that, that's all. I think it's very clear. And also a little more commentary on the, on the legal implications of content-neutral versus localities that have done it other ways. So that is a factor for me making my vote.
Okay.
I'm not trying to complicate things here. I just do not feel, feel comfortable going forward with something that I think will not work.
Okay, here's what I was gonna say, as I think was, Councilmember Kick just pointed out. I, if it's just simply do your best to see if there are any other examples, you can do that by the fourteen, by the first meeting in November. As Councilmember Monroe pointed out, whether or not those examples exist doesn't change her vote. Doesn't change my vote. So the thing is, let's, what I don't want to do is risk this not happening, and it's so easy to have that happen. So I think we put a time, the other thing we have to specify, bring it back the first meeting in November. Effort is made to see if there are any other examples, but that's not necessary, and then that's it. So I would, do I, Councilmember Monroe, do you agree with the first meeting in November? Councilmember Monroe, do you agree with the first meeting in November?
Sure, I do.
Okay, so now we've got that clarity. Any further discussion? So let's have a roll call.
Councilmember Carling?
No.
Councilmember Kick?
Yes.
Councilmember Monroe?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banano?
No.
Mayor Warner?
Yes, passes three to two. So thank you. Now we're on to the next item is the discussion and direction on the City Council Subcommittee's recommended revisions to the City Council's Rules of Procedure and the City Council's Norms, Values and Principles of Governance. Can we have the staff presentation, please?
Yes, Honorable Mayor and Members of the City Council, this is once again your City Manager, Mariana Madraschova. And our last item this evening, seven point three, will be introduced by our Assistant City Manager, Christine Martin. Ms. Martin?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council. This is Christine Martin, your Assistant City Manager. And I'm here this evening basically just to introduce this item, which is a discussion and direction on the City Council Subcommittee's Recommended Revisions to the City Council's Rules of Procedure and the City Council's Norms, Values and Principles of Governance documents. In summary, the Council Subcommittee consists of Mayor Warner and Councilmember Carling. And the Subcommittee did collaborate on revisions to those two aforementioned documents. And the revisions are in the City Council Packet this evening and are presented for the Council Discussion and Direction on the following slides. And I have one slide for each document, so when you've finished with one, one document, we'll all go ahead and forward the slideshow to the next slide for you. So this first one is for the Norms, Values and Principles of Governance document. And I'll turn it over to you, Honorable Mayor.
Okay, thank you for that. What, I would say this is sort of a preamble to both this discussion and the, and the next one is that it's, the, the suggested in changes are based on, you know, just looking at, at, you know, how we do business and especially how we, you know, it's been impacted by the pandemic. On the norms, values and principles of governance, as you can see here, the highlight is the transparent communication, mutual respect and appreciation. And again, clarifying the relationship between the City Council and staff. And, and so those, those are the focus items of it. I think another one there is making sure there's a parallel structure between the comments with respect to the City Manager and the City Attorney. But this is really about how we relate to one another. And that's all I have to say on this. Councilmember Carling?
No, I don't think I can add anything. You did a very nice job on that one. Thank you.
Okay, at this point, no, I guess we've got the two, the two, and then we'll go to public comment. So I guess we're ready for the next one.
Oh, there we go. Great. So the next was your rules of procedure document. And we do have a note here on the slide of changes that were made by the Subcommittee or proposed by the Subcommittee in red on the slide this evening that were not in publication of the packet. They are in the supplemental, so they are available online. And as you can see, I won't go through the detail on these bullets, but there are several areas in that document that you're proposing changes. And I'll let the mayor and Councilmember Carling go through this.
Again, that, thank you. For, at a high level is, you know, as we think about it, how, how do the mayor and the City Council relate to one another? I'll just say, being mayor, I've thought about it a little bit more deeply than I had in the past as a council member. So some of those recommendations came from that. And, and it also, it's, it's not only how the council and the mayor relate to one another, but also how we as a council relate to the City Attorney and City Manager. The second bullet is alluded to, is we've, you know, the hybrid meeting protocols have allowed us to you know, think about how we're going to do business in a way that works. I think tonight is sort of a, of a test of the ultimate of what we're trying to do with having the presiding officer remote. But it's given us the flexibility, you know, for people who are out of town or in my case, not feeling well, but can still function. Then the refining the agenda development. I think the reason that red was put there on item one is that the, you know, putting an item on the agenda takes three. The City Council can appoint a Subcommittee of two. And what we want is that Subcommittee then to work with the City Manager to put the item on the agenda rather than just the two of them. And the other item, the second item is that, you know, we have very competent City Manager, City Attorney and associated staff. And that, to the extent possible, council members are urged to work with them to get the value before initiating something. And, and also not only in terms of the content, but making sure that there's the appropriate bandwidth in the this staff to get the item done and it maybe identify what item would drop off of the priorities if we're going to add one. There's all kinds of things where a consultation in advance is helpful. That's the recommendation. And then the third one is, I'll just say, in, in myself, you know, I've been on the council eleven years and I have said things, you know, fortunately, it's only a handful of times in response to what I was hearing. And every one of those times, I regretted it. So the, this is really about the learning that I've had for myself, and I think others may have experienced too, is you know, it, it doesn't help to engage. And so that's just, again, the encouragement not to on some of those things. And then finally, there are many reasons for attempt, you know, for trying to limit the advisory body members to seven. I know for the, in general, I know that for the general plan advisory, we went up to nineteen for very good reason in terms of wanting that kind of broad spectrum. But in general, it's the idea is, you know, pick a number, seven's an odd number so that you can have a a vote or something from them. But that, that's the my summary of the key changes. And I would ask Councilmember Carling if you'd like to highlight anything else?
I just wanted to thank staff and other folks from City Manager's Office as well as City Attorney's Office working with us on this. And I, the mayor spent a lot of time on this whole document, and I appreciated the work that he did in leading us in the, in looking at this. I just wanted, again, point out for the public that I think what we're talking about here is being consistent with state statute because some of those change over the, over the years and making sure that we clarify the roles and responsibilities of of all of us. And I think, again, sometimes that was confusing in the rules of procedure. So again, I think following whatever up, whatever updates on state statute as well as clarifying roles. And I think another important point that the mayor brought up in the previous discussion was around the pandemic. I think we also learned a lot about council meetings and public hearings in the course of the last two or two and a half years. And so I think the pandemic has also raised our attention to what we could do to improve our rules of procedure so that we accommodate those periods of time when we can't all be together. And as he pointed out, tonight's a, a good example. So, yeah, thanks for the opportunity.
And if, if I could just, I think that's, I wanted to also say, I appreciate you, Councilmember Carling, for working with me on this. It's, it's painful going through all this language and really trying to get it right. And I think the City Manager and the City Attorney's Office themselves and their staff members contributed a lot to refining the language and making sure that everything was consistent. And like in the previous agenda item, this isn't the end of it. It's just one more iteration and every council can adjust these as they go forward. The spirit here is really trying to learn from our practical experience and to modernize with the improvements in technology. So all of those things are wrapped into this. So any other, at this point, and I, is there any member of the public that wishes to address us on this?
Mayor, no comments have been received.
Okay, and I'll open and close the public comment on this item. And I see Vice Mayor Banano has had raised.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for this. I, I, I think these are very appropriate changes. I, I like all of them. I have a couple quick comments, minor comments. So just want to clarify what, on page fourteen, this is regarding the agenda building. When you refer to the duly created City Council Subcommittee, I, I believe this means that any standing or either ad hoc standing or current or future Subcommittee can with City Manager concurrence, put something on the agenda. This is not a Subcommittee, it's not the Subcommittee of Councilmember Carling and Mayor Warner who drafted these changes. That's not the Subcommittee we're referring to. We're referring to any Subcommittee can with City Manager's concurrence, put something on the agenda. Am I stating that clearly? Or is that my, the correct interpretation?
If, if I could respond to that, I believe so. What it, it, what it's saying is, you know, as we have Subcommittee's, as you pointed out, they need to be ad hoc or standing. But the, the idea is that the council creates the Subcommittee. And that, you know, that's a majority of the council doing that, but as the Subcommittee does its work, it's, it's only two. And that we're, we're, we don't want to get past the requirement that three council members put something on the agenda. So the, the other path here would be for the Subcommittee to bring it back to the council for approval. But the City Manager has the authority to put something on the agenda.
I, I like it this way. I just wanted to be clear of what Subcommittee or Subcommittees we were, we were referring to. It was just clarification of the language. The second thing, I'm just curious about why we were scratching Presi- Presiding Officer inflation with mayor. Presiding Officer seems to me to be the mayor in most cases, but also whoever may be the Presiding Officer. Why would we go toward what sounds like a more specific, more restrictive term there? What was wrong with Presiding Officer? Because that seems to include the mayor and, and anyone who may be standing in for the mayor.
I, I, I think this is a question for the legal counsel. I believe that in statute, they specifically in certain instances referred to the mayor. And so I, but I, I, you know, you, you got a good point there, but I think we want to hear from council on this one.
I'll also say that I think there was originally some confusion that we went back and forth. And I think I asked the City Attorney for some clarification about how to make sure that it was clearer than what it was. And maybe we've, maybe we haven't got clear enough.
I have one more comment after, after council.
And I think the mayor, the reference to the mayor does make clear that it should be the mayor, but I agree, there's cases when the mayor is not there. It should be the pro temp or whoever will be the Presiding Officer. So I can check with Jason on that for the, when it comes back, whether it should be the Presiding Officer or the mayor.
Okay, yeah, I'm fine either way. I just wanted to be a little clearer about why it went that direction.
Understood.
And, and my last comment is, and we're, we're not voting on anything, right? We're just giving direction. I think section sixteen on advisory bodies, the section sixteen point one, which is, includes sixteen point one point one and sixteen point one point two. I think it could be a little clearer, the distinction between internal internal commi- Subcommittee's and bodies versus external, like, like our Planning Commission, Library Board or internals, ACTC Commissions, you know, LDI Board, those are external. It seems like it's a little muddled together in those sections. And maybe we could take another crack at that. And that's, that's all I had. Otherwise, I think these are very good changes and really support them. And thank you to the Subcommittee for doing all the work. That's it.
I just want to clarify, what we're doing is, I don't know if it's an official vote, but it's a, but is the direction this specific enough that when this comes back, it's coming back on the consent calendar? So, right, Councilmember Monroe?
Yeah, so I, I appreciate all of this. It is, I, I think it does clarify. I agree, I, I, I am, I hadn't noticed the mayor versus the Presiding Officer. It's an interesting point. I'm looking forward to seeing, seeing the distinction there. The point that draw, drew my attention was response to public comment or response to the, to, I'm sorry, could you put that slide back up? I, I don't have the exact language. Can we see the slide one more time? The
Correct. The summary of the rules and the, it was also the two slides that Christine, you asked me to speak to. That one.
Yes. Okay, thank you. I wanted that, that language. Councilmembers are encouraged to avoid responding to perceived derogatory comments. And what that got me thinking about is that there's actually three, at least three categories. One is comments that are just derogatory. Just rude in, in one way or another, or just silly. And, and, and that clearly is what this is, I, I intended, you know, intended for us to not go down to that level. But there's a couple of other comment, types of comments that I'd like to see addressed. One is when there is a need to correct the record where by not responding, it appears that we're letting miss misstatements, lies, some form of serious damage to the city stand. And that demand, that I, I think that we, we need to find a way to say how we respond to that and under what circumstances. Don't know that it has to happen specifically at this go around, but it seems to me that that's separate from what this is addressing. And then the second one is where community members, groups of community members are, are being attacked in one way or another. And I'm specifically referring to something that I haven't really seen happen here, but could, and that's hate speech. I know that that has happened at other city councils at, at, at various times. I, I think that in that case, we need to find a way to be proactive and have some language that we can think about that would allow us to respond to that. So those would be the two things that I'd be, I'd be concerned about with that.
So I, I wanted to say is I, I agree with your comment on that. This item three here isn't meant to preclude that. And I think in the next go around, I don't think we have to do it here as you suggest, but for the next council could address maybe some guidance as to when it's appropriate to respond to misinformation and hate speech and how. I think that that actually takes some very careful consideration. And we're not going to be able to do that this time around, but I think the next council could certainly address that. And when these, again, it's in the, you know, beginning of the next council, they will look at these rules and that would be something we could suggest they address.
Right, and that's exactly where I was going with that. I, I wasn't suggesting we take it on right this minute, but that'd be, yeah, yeah.
It's a good, good add. Councilmember Kick?
I promise to address it when you're gone. So you can, you can rest assured. I think, I think it's, this is a nice first step and in, in our, in our norms and values conversation that comes up soon enough. I'm sure we will discuss it, though. I think these are great and I appreciate the time put in here.
So I, again, just for clarity, this will come back as a consent calendar. So again, just for clarity, this will come back as a consent calendar item, the first meeting in November, correct?
Yes, that is correct, Honorable Mayor.
Okay, do you need any further direction from us on this?
Nope, we have everything we need. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. And it really, everybody's careful thought. And I think we've made some progress on this one, too, that will really help the city govern itself better. So thank you. So we're now on to item 8.0, council committee reports and matters initiated. And I'll start with councilmember K.
My computer died. It's on my phone. Sorry, I couldn't find my mute. I don't have much to report. It's been a kind of a quiet week. We did do our awards, was that two weeks ago? I feel like, I don't know what time it is, our awards to the advisory bodies. And Max joined me there and stole the show as per usual. So that's, that's all I really have. And I'm tired. Sorry.
You don't need to keep going.
Yeah, I'm done. Thank you.
Okay, councilmember Carling.
Yes, thanks. So on the 12th, I and several of my colleagues were at a sculpture dedication at the Springtown Library, a very nice event. On the 13th, there was a luncheon at Garey, sponsored by the Chamber, recognizing some businesses in the community. Later that afternoon, I had a stop-waste meeting. And then following that, there was a civic appreciation dinner. I think that's what councilmember K was referring to. Then on the 17th, I attended Sustainable Wine Making that was sponsored by our assembly member Rebecca Bauer-Kean at Taylor Wineries. It was really quite interesting, or Resloff Winery, sorry, it's Bob Taylor is the owner. Resloff Winery, it was really quite interesting hearing from some people that are associated with the wine industry in terms of conserving water and that kind of thing. On the 18th, had a Zoom meeting with, as I mentioned earlier, Bloom Electric. And that was, again, interesting to hear what they, what they're promoting and the kinds of technology they have. On the 19th, participated with some of my colleagues in the community service day kickoff meeting. And I think it was mentioned earlier, it was on May 6th, is that right? So May 6th, for those that are still listening at 10:15 tonight, there will be the community service day on May 6th. And lots of different activities sponsored by the city, joint with many of the religious community and nonprofits here in town. On the 20th, I had the pleasure of substituting for the vice mayor who couldn't do it for the mayor. So I was the substitute for the substitute for the mayor's report on TV 30, which was always, I always enjoy doing. And then later participated with the Tri Valley Nonprofit Alliance, presenting a number of grant awards to some nonprofits here in our community. Again, something they do quarterly, and again, a very, very nice event. So thank you very much. That's it.
Okay, councilmember Monroe.
Well, I've seen a lot of councilmember Carling this, these last couple of weeks. I am, you know, councilmember K, if you think you're tired, I'm in Chicago. I'm really tired. So I'm going to be as brief as I can and just add the items that I was not at with, that councilmember Carling has not covered, that I was at, that he wasn't. One is, I was, I had the pleasure of attending a youth and government working group, which is designed to find ways to, as it says, work with the schools, LARPD, and cities to include youth in city activities. And that looks like a really good first step, so I'm excited about that. And, hang on a minute. One other item here. Ah, we had intergovernmental meeting on Thursday, the 20th, right before I got on a plane to go to Chicago. And an East Bay Community Energy Board, Board Meeting on the 19th. I also wanted to just do a quick shout out to the sustainable wine growers. I know that councilwoman Carling already covered that, but it was particularly interesting for this, this region to see what can be done for sustainable, for renewable, for regenerative wine making. It's very exciting to see what this, how this region is progressing. And with that, I'm going to close because it's 12:15 here.
Okay, Vice Mayor Bonanno.
Yeah, I have actually had a busy couple of weeks, but I'm going to just highlight one or two things here. On the 10th, I had a chance to tour Form Factors Manufacturing Facility, which is off of Long Guard Road, which is off of Patterson Pass. They're one of our biggest employers, and they do one of the world's leading companies that does semiconductor wafer testing. And they have some, some very, very cool and then really state-of-the-art facilities for doing that type of testing or to manufacture those test equipment, really key pieces of test equipment. And they're really at the cutting edge. They have some beautiful facilities, learned a lot about what we're doing, they're doing, and enjoyed that very much. So just getting around and seeing some of our big employers, I think, is really a very beneficial thing for us to do on occasion because we, we benefit greatly and hopefully they feel like this is a good place to have their business. And two quick things on ACTC. So two days ago, last Thursday, I attended a clean, virtual clean fuel summit, which was very interesting. It was all about how the local, the whole spectrum of transportation agencies, whether it's the ferry system, ValleyLink, Laft, ACTC, ACTC, AC Transit, all of our various modes of transportation, public transportation. We're talking about how they're making transitions away from fossil fuels toward clean energy, clean fuels. And it was just fascinating to hear how the ferry boats are going to be eventually hydrogen fuel cell propelled. So that was just very, very interesting to hear that. And then there was also a second panel from, everything from DOE representation all the way down to the state agencies responsible for this kind of, these kinds of initiatives, discuss sort of the regulatory aspects of it. So very, very interesting. I think it's probably available as a webinar on the ACTC website. And the last thing I'll say is today, city manager and I hosted the executive director from ACTC, Tesla and Joe, who came to Livermore. And I, just my only reason for commenting on it is that I think as council members, these committee assignments we have just really, really are influential and can make a big difference in the type of funding and the type of visibility we get with these regional agencies that have a great deal of funding. I mean, ACTC manages a billion dollars. And how well we present ourselves and make our projects compelling when we're competing against Oakland, Berkeley, Albany, Emeryville, Pleasanton, Dublin, all of those. I mean, I don't know how many cities, 20 cities or something. I mean, it's just, it's just, we have to sort of keep those contacts and it's sort of on us as council members through these committee assignments that we, we make sure we have, have the appropriately sized seat at the table. So I will end there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I just want to build on what Vice Mayor Bonanno just said, that these relationships at the regional level commissions matter. And one thing I forgot to highlight in the rules discussion earlier, but I'll mention it now if I may, is that part of that is designed to make sure that as the council members develop expertise in an area and contacts, that it's easier for that to be maintained across various transitions to the extent. So that's a, that was another part of the rule design was to leverage and make sure we're taking, making use of that expertise, which is very important. I also want to thank all my fellow council members for filling in for me is when I, you know, just not able to make those events, and it's been harder and time goes on for me. So I appreciate the stepping in. As to the last, you know, time period here, I want to mention, one thing I did was a town hall sponsored by the Livermore Vine Pleasanton Weekly. And that was an opportunity, people call that an AMA meeting, ask me anything. And questions were submitted in advance, and I was able to answer those, plus there were impromptu ones as well. The civic appreciation dinner was mentioned. It's always great for the, to see all the members of the community that help us manage the city. The staff of the council can't do it alone. And it's very important that we have people who want to contribute their time and expertise. And building on that, you know, the question is, how do we get people to do that? Now, we have the key to the city program that we mentioned was restarting. And that was designed, created by, I think, a former city clerk who viewed it as a way to recruit people. So that's where people get to know how the city operates. I think it's great the way the city manager is going to start putting the key information on video because some of that doesn't change, and that will make it a lot more accessible. And that's also the reason, you know, we had a halt because of COVID, but now we're using technology. So that's another benefit. And then I'll say, I also participated, this kickoff for the Chamber of Commerce program for, I forget what it's called, but it's something like a business alliance. And the idea there for the chamber is to bring people together from the community that want to focus on helping the community and how do they learn who's who and how to make contact. So that program is very complimentary to the key to the city program. Now, in some other cities, they've tried to put it together in one, doesn't work out so well. I think we've got a good setup here. So that's, excuse me, my, my voice is going here. So the, so that's what I wanted to mention. And so now we're at the point, we're going to, we'll adjourn the meeting to a regular city council meeting on Monday, November 14th, 2022, at 7:00 PM at the Civic Center Meeting Hall. So thank you very much and good night.